Give your shtick and we'll crank it up.
Okay, okay. Alrighty, we are going to start the meeting tonight. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July 28th Planning Commission meeting. We are broadcasting this live via local channel 27 and Pacific Coast TV website. You can still submit some comments if you need to and can get online or on our Zoom meeting via my email, which is bjet, so B J E T T at H N B city.com before the ending of the public comment. Later, this recording will be published on our city's website under the Planning Commission agendas. We know that there are many community members on tonight, and we appreciate that and we're excited. You will have, we will have public comment during this period, this evening during the study session. Just a few etiquette items, the chair will open the item for public comment. And those wanting to speak will need to acknowledge by raising their hand. And then it'll just come first come, first serve. I will call individually and help the chair during that time. If you do have a telephone only, you can hit star six to raise and unraise, and you can mute that way as well with star nine, excuse me. Otherwise, your tablet, phones, etc. Do have a raising hand feature should be located on the bottom hand of your screen. Each commenter can have up to three minutes. I will be holding a timer on that. And there was correspondence sent late this afternoon to the Planning Commission. Brittany sent that out. And it is also posted on the agenda. So for on the city's website, if you go to the agenda right under the Planning Commission staff report and attachment, there's an additional one for stuff that came in. And I think that's it. So I'm going to turn it over to Chair Benjamin to officially start the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Bridget, and welcome everyone to the meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Hafnu Bay for Tuesday, July 28, 2020. I'm calling the meeting to order. I wonder if you rise, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could we please have a roll call, Bridget?
Yes, Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Vice Chair Reddick.
I'm here.
And Chair Benjamin.
I am also here. Thank you very much. Good to have you all with us.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Yay. And welcome to the public who's joining us tonight. The Zoom format is maybe a new experience for some of you, but we're going to work hard to make it work for you. We found it to be successful. So bear with us while we do our best to accommodate. The first item on our agenda after the roll call is consideration of the minutes of the meeting of July 14, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections from my colleagues? I just had one. I wanted to clarify in the notes. It mentioned that I was concerned about Venice access with respect to parking. And I just wanted to clarify that what I was talking about was not the parking from cars driving down the road, getting into the parking lot, but cars, visitors clambering down from the parking lot down to the beach. It's a, it's a very difficult item, and perhaps I'll elaborate more on that either in the context of coastal access or in the planning commissioner communications later this evening. But with that, I have no other changes and would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Just a note, I have to abstain from the voting because I was not present for the last meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Holt. Just there a second.
A second.
Roll call vote, please, Bridget.
Commissioner Polgar.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez. Oh, I'm sorry. And then Vice Chair Reddick.
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin. Sorry, I'm Oliver.
That's okay. And to be clear, the motion was to approve with the correction, yes?
Correct, I believe.
Yes, Sarah, let the record show Sarah's nodding her head. I think, okay, good. All right, the next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is the time of our meeting when any member of the public who would like to speak with us on an item that is not on our agenda. So anything that is not part of the local coastal land use plan study session can speak to us on that item tonight. And this is the time, if you raised your hand or would like to do so, Bridget will take note. Bridget, do we have any oral communications this evening?
I see, I have one person. I have a Steve H., so let me just allow him to talk.
Fantastic. I'll open the public comment then.
Whoops. Okay, Steve, you're.
I'm going to unmute.
You are unmuted now. You may speak.
Hi, everybody. I just got on tonight. I'm so thankful. And what a beautiful day here. I noticed that there was some talk about Venice Beach Boulevard. I've tried my best to help the city understand what's going on here. I live right here near Venice Beach Boulevard. And if I can help, please reach out to me. I know I've spoken with a lot of people at the city. I just want to know, I want you to let you know that I'm with you guys and I'm listening. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers in the oral communication section of our meeting, Bridget?
I do not see any. Nobody's raising their hand, and I'm moving Steve out.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Just so that for folks who are new to this, we don't respond directly to comments that are made during oral communications, but we heard you and we appreciate what you said. Thank you very much. I will now close the oral communication session. And this brings us to the Planning Commission study session for the local coastal land use plan. And is it Jill or is it Brittany?
Good evening, Chair Benjamin. I will, I will kick this off, but this is going to be a detailed amount of presentation from both of us, mostly Brittany. And we'd like to also, as staff, welcome the public. Right now, we see there's over 30 folks who are tuned in, and we're really happy to see you all here and welcome you. And so we are delighted to be back with the LCP update at this phase of the process. Reminding everyone present again, this is a study session. It's not a decision-making meeting, although we are, we're getting close to that. So we are very mindful of that. And thus, as we have talked about in the past, we continue to pay attention to potential conflicts of interest that individual planning commissioners may have. Under the Political Reform Act, the commission can oversee general plan and LCP updates. That's the local coastal program update. However, when it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on maps, individual commissioners may need to recuse themselves. We know that they've been thinking about this. They're very mindful and sensitive to following this. So these topics can come up in the forum of discussion of the commissions. They may also come up from public comment. So we will, we will be tracking that. And in the event that we come back into discussion mode, we will request that individual commissioners acknowledge if there are specific sites that they would like to discuss. If we forget to do that, please, Chair, help us, help us. And I have it in my notes, but sometimes we get caught up with the flow of the discussion. But if this is the case, we want to make sure that you have a chance to recuse yourself temporarily from the discussion, which we understand in the Zoom format is to simply turn off your video. It's the equivalent to walking out of the room that we would normally have in our EOC space. So that is what we will ask you to do, and then we will, I will send you a text or some other way to acknowledge when you can pop back in, or Bridget will do that. All right, I think it's time for our presentation. And Brittany, are you able to cue that up? And I only have one more slide, and then she's going to get going for a while. Thank you. Can everyone see that, Commission? Okay. All right, so this is the overview of the presentation tonight. The intent for this study session is to help everyone really see what has changed since the last draft. It's been a while since we met, and we want to give you plenty of time, which is the other reason why we started this session early. So we're going to give a chapter-by-chapter overview and highlight the changes in this public, what we're hoping to become your public hearing draft. Then there'll be time for clarifying questions. We hope that we can really kind of keep those narrow so that your big pool of community members have time to talk, because you're going to have plenty of time to discuss. And then we'll conclude the meeting with a review of next steps and timing. There is one next step, though, that I'd really like to address upfront, which in discussion with Chair Benjamin, and he's supportive of this, and he's welcome to flush this out more if I don't, if I don't hit all the right notes here. But we don't have every single thing ready. The rest of it will come out next week, probably Monday. That will be Chapter Three, the Public Works Chapter. And there's a number of very important appendices. One of them is the build-out summary, and we know people are very interested in that, and it's important. So you have plenty to talk about tonight with eight chapters, but you will have even more to think about when those come out. So your meeting on August 11th is lightly scheduled with business items. And so we would like to just continue and have more study session at that very next session to make sure that everyone has a chance to read what's already been put out and the new materials. And with that, Brittany is ready to plunge in, so.
Actually, let me just amplify if I might, Jill, for the public. We know this document has only been out for a couple of days. We understand that it's going to take some time to digest it. So I want to make it clear that while we welcome people's comments tonight, we know we'll get more considered comments in our next session, and we want time to react to it and time to think through it. And as Jill said, the Chapter Three is the piece of the puzzle that has to make all the other pieces fit together. So it's important for us to digest this material and see Chapter Three in the context of what we understand about this chapter or these chapters, rather. So I just want to make anyone who feels anxious or hurried in the feeling that they need to comment or it's going to be too late, that that's not the case. We welcome your comments tonight. We'll welcome them again with the agreement of barring objection from my colleagues at our first meeting in August as well. And of course, we're currently agendized for consideration of a recommendation at the second meeting of August. But we'll take things one at a time. My guitar instructor taught me a long time ago that speed is the byproduct of accuracy. So with that in mind, let's hear what this version says. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Benjamin and Commissioners. Good evening, everyone. So it's been a little while since we last met, so I'm just going to give a brief overview of where we left off. Last October, we held a joint study session with the Planning Commission and City Council, at which staff went over the major strategic points of the land use plan update and identified opportunities and areas for improvement to make for the final draft. We've received over 600 public comments that were summarized in a response table and also received a comment letter from coastal commission staff. So since that time, staff has been working on incorporating direction from the Planning Commission, the City Council, the public, and the coastal commission staff comment letter into the final draft version that we are discussing tonight. To quickly remind everyone what was the main points of the coastal commission comment letter, they had five big topics that carried throughout the whole document, specifically the length of the document. They requested redesignation of our plan development or PD land uses to reflect its actual land use or intended land use, as well as reducing the amount of detail in the PD policies. And they had also requested redesignation of the reserve land, so urban reserve and open space reserve land use designations. And finally, requested a refinement for the ESHA buffer policies to better rely on site-specific information. So these were all pretty big topics that we have been discussing in ongoing coordination with coastal commission staff since that letter. And you'll see where they pick up in each chapter as we go through them tonight. So throughout the chapter, the background information has been either truncated or moved to a new appendix. You'll notice that it's considerably shorter and where there were more programmatic policies asking the city to do something or study something. This was either, these were either revised to be more actionable and helpful in review of coastal development permits, or they were proposed to be moved to the appropriate general plan element. And these were all noted in the policy comparison tables that were provided for each chapter where a policy was moved to which element. So just to click through each chapter, for Chapter One, the most notable change is a updated graphic showing the relationship between the land use plan and the general plan. A new text box showing a really comprehensive list of coastal resources consistent with coastal commission guidance documents. And the plan administration section is moved to a new appendix that you will see next week with Public Works. And the priority uses discussion was clarified in the context of Coastal Act priority and local priorities. And this was something that was further clarified in Chapter Two, as Jill will discuss.
Brittany, I am going to now spend some time covering the key changes in Chapter Two. And one, one thing I really want to acknowledge in looking at the participants here tonight is that we see some fruition of the labors of our G-PAC, remembering back our General Plan Advisory Committee. And a number of you, we see that you're here continuing to participate years on end. And just the support of seeing this through is gratifying to staff. We love bumping into you on the street, even when we don't recognize each other anymore with our masks on, but it's very nice. So welcome and thank you. So Chapter Two is really a, it's brought forward for some important changes for planning context for Hafnu Bay. And first and foremost, we just know that we worked so hard on a lot of community character policies and thinking about that context and the desire for that, which is really not the top dead center of a local coastal program. We had nice policies around that, and we were advised that we really shouldn't include those in the LCP. So Brittany is here to reassure you, as am I, that we are, we are, they're not gone. We are sorting them up, and they are going to go into a general plan element, which has been sort of in parallel becoming assembled as we spend that work. So if you're missing what you had wanted to see about neighborhoods and community character and historic resources and another thing from another chapter, all of those things are going to be preserved, and your work will be brought forward in general plan elements. And those policies will be back in public forum for you to comment on. The game changer in this plan is moving on from reserve designations. And we'll talk about that in a minute with this new rural coastal designation. And also the plan developments and workforce housing overlay designation, which is something that the City Council really put some energy behind at the study session back in October. And then some very gentle upzownings in and around the town center in very specific areas. Next slide, please. All right, so we can come back to this map anytime, and I will highlight. Brittany, I don't know if you can, since it's your presentation. Can you please just highlight the rural coastal color first, which is that brown shade?
Let's see, in most of our ag property.
Sorry, Brittany, through the chair, it's a little hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's the light brown color right here, where my mouse is. And you can see it surrounding the orange residential neighborhood areas on the map.
We'll talk more about that in a minute. There's also a property that is, several properties actually showing in open space conservation. If you could highlight that one up on the hill.
That's the light green here.
And there's a lot of explanation in the narrative about these changes, and we're happy to fill questions, but I'm going to keep plugging. And if at any point we need to move back to this map, we can. You will notice that there are not so many PDs left. And we'll, we'll talk about that as well. There's about 10 now, I believe, three that are developed or we call substantially developed and seven that are undeveloped. Okay, next slide, please. And then most of the changes that are really sort of focused for helping support the orientation of this plan to concentrate development in the town center are going to show up within this blue boundary. And you'll see the town center outline on, I think we have it. It's really, and the organizing concept for this plan. And we'll come back to this as needed, but you'll note we've got some new colors in different places than you saw with the last draft. And we would love to tell you more about those.
Jill, through the chair, this is Commissioner Polgar. Are other people hearing an echo?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out.
Spending a lot of time on conference calls for my work, I might recommend anybody who's not actively speaking mute themselves, exactly.
Mute if you aren't talking.
I just went and muted a handful. Sorry, Rick, that was me doing that, going through.
Is this better? Okay, great. All right. So Brittany's going to highlight a few areas on the map. She's going to first show Poplar and Metzger down at the south end of town, which is, we call South Downtown as part of the town center. Those areas have been in the medium density designation, and we're proposing that they move up to the high-density designation. There are a number of undeveloped parcels there. There's room for a little bit of infill, not a lot. This is not, these are not big shifts. They're gentle tactical shifts to try to accommodate the development type that we have heard from the community's interests, the Planning Commission, the G-PAC, and of course, City Council, including in alignment with their ongoing multi-year priority for affordable housing. Brittany, could you please also highlight the Johnston Block? So moving this mixed-use designation back a little bit deeper than it was before. Our intent, and you'll see this in an appendix that you're going to get next week, would be to have that move into that transitional zoning that allows for sort of a graceful edge conversion from the downtown core to the residential neighborhood next to it. And then we'll come back to this slide when we start talking about PDs, because I want to review the Andriati changes. And I think we should move on to talk about rural coastal. So the urban reserve and open space reserve land use designations are removed in whole from the draft that you have now. And we're very interested in your input about this. This is something that you don't do until it's really the right time and you've done enough analysis of infrastructure capacity and sort of the scope and condition of the community as a whole. And we believe that the conditions on the ground and inner infrastructure support this change. It also aligns with the interest that the commission has shown for different land uses and their consistency with the Coastal Act. So this is replaced with the rural coastal land use designation to support agricultural land use. And further, it's in recognition that infrastructure capacity is not adequate to support significant development in these lands that had been held in reserve. The new designation supports the continued viability of agriculture and agricultural compatible operations through expanded permitted uses such as boarding for researchers. There's interest in that locally. Other short stays, visitor-serving agricultural-related uses, including farm-to-table, low-density camping, educational programming, and other compatible temporary uses. The idea about compatible uses is that they are preserving of the soils. They don't require a heavy footprint, a heavy development footprint. And, but that they also can support the landowner to expand economic viability by having more options for how to use the land in a way that is really showcasing and supporting their agricultural operations. All right, plan developments. So we floated a few ideas with the last draft for three new plan developments, and we are not bringing any of them forward. They all attracted some attention, and what was great about it is we learned even more about these areas. And we've also had a few changed conditions. One of them was the Upper Grandview Glencrey proposal, which was to allow for some cluster development, possibly that took advantage of the city-owned Upper Glencrey property in combination with privately owned lots at the eastern end of Grandview Boulevard. The property owner really did not want to pursue this, and we recognized through mapping that we prepared for, actually, it was a wetland delineation for the goat grazing CDP. Oh, thank you, Brittany, that there's just. That there's just, it's a challenging area and is, um, it always will be whether it's a PD or whether it has regular zoning. And we decided that it would be best to leave, leave well enough alone. And, uh, we have time to, to consider how to, to plan this area without forcing a PD in it. If, if the property owners and, um, or the property owners aren't, aren't interested at this point. So, um, basically that's a no change from the existing, uh, 1996 certified document. Although Brittany, please highlight the lower portion of the Glen Creek parcel, which is shown in the green color, which is the open space for conservation designation. The portion that is shown in the medium density land use designation is that upper portion where there, um, she's got the wetland, um, and, and other water features shown on that, uh, graphic below in the bottom right. We're trying to align with where there's actual, some open space that, that may not have ESHA, may not, may have some room, um, complying with buffers and those kinds of requirements. So it was a, it's just a backing out of, of that idea. Uh, the next one. Okay, so the, um, we had an idea about a Stone Pine Conservation Corridor Plan Development. This is 880 Stone Pine. Uh, the commission actually looked at this property at, uh, it was at your last meeting. You made a general plan, uh, conformance statement for the city's purchase of this, um, property from Post, the Peninsula Open Space Trust, for the purposes of the city's continued use of the property for our corp yard. Uh, we did not know at the time that the draft went out, um, really how far that, um, pursuit of a purchase would go. Um, but now that it is, it's well underway, city council has approved, um, us to complete all of the details in the transaction, the due diligence, et cetera. Uh, the public facilities designation is appropriate for it. Um, that doesn't mean the conservation corridor concepts will get overlooked. We know there's a frog breeding pond, it's documented. We know that Pillar Seas Creek is ESHA, we know it needs to have a buffer. Uh, there's dispersal habitat area for the California red-legged frog. And, uh, these are all things that have been compatible frankly with, with the operation that the city's corp yard has been, um, undergoing for quite a few years. So moving it into a public facilities designation currently in your 96 certified document, it's an urban reserve. A public facilities designation has been broadened a little bit to include some small-scale agricultural uses. And that was something that Post really wanted this property to be able to support if, if there was an opportunity to do it, um, because it has historic use. Next one. And okay, here we are with Dolores. Uh, we've learned a lot down here. Uh, so we, we had really studied, uh, this, this area to possibly be a plan development and even possibly be a receiver site or a transfer of development rights from the North Wave Crest PD. The feedback was watch out, you've probably got some wetlands. You definitely have some poor draining soils and, um, we, we had encouraged this idea because there's no sewer service there. And the PD can help, um, through the specific plan process, uh, set up infrastructure, um, funding and, um, really plan it comprehensively and do a great job. But again, property owners preferred what they had. Um, that said, what they have right now is medium density residential and we're proposing low. And the reason why we're proposing low is because there is no sewer and the city's minimum lot size for septic is 15,000 square feet. And we actually find that that's not always enough. And, uh, we're trying to size the sites to conform to, uh, the performance of actually having functioning utilities, whether they be public or private. So this is, um, matching to the, um, capability of the land. Uh, there is one little corner that's changed, Brittany, can you highlight that, um, corner of Redondo Beach Road and Highway 1? There's a, a property there that goes all the way back to, um, the, the street that you can see the little, the little white line of it where there's a childcare center. That one lot is in the Wave Crest Plan Development area right now. And it makes it very difficult for them to do anything as an ongoing use. Uh, so we, we're, we're not sure why they were included in Wave Crest PD, but we, we would, um, encourage the commission to consider putting them in, uh, along with everything else in this, um, Bernardo, the Bernardo Station subdivision into the low-density designation as, as we've mapped here. And, um, that would simplify things for the childcare center. Okay, those were the three that we tried and we're happy to set them aside. These are, this is part of the process and, um, staff doesn't take any umbrage of, um, floating up, um, ideas like that and, and finding that they're, they're not the right ones. And in fact, in two of these cases, we're going to have different changes. So, um, the process, we hope you see, um, we think it worked to get us to where we should be, should be moving. All right, next slide. Okay, um, this is the other big shift for plan developments is to redesignate them to, uh, land uses that are consistent with either what they are because they're developed or, um, what they, they could be because they're, they're actually fairly simple PDs. So, um, in the case of this chart, four of these are substantially or wholly developed. Um, so Casimera is wholly developed, it would go into a medium-density land use designation as proposed. I'm going to come back to Andriati because it's, uh, three different parts and we'll want to look at the map while we talk about those. Main Street Park is pretty straightforward right now. It is, um, fully developed with multifamily housing run by Mid Penn for affordable housing. And we're, uh, proposing to align it to the high-density designation. The South Wave Crest area is also developed, it's golf course and RV park. And these are visitor-serving commercial uses. Um, now coming back up the chart, the LC Smith estate, that's the South Downtown Gateway PD. This one really is, uh, characterized differently than all the other PDs, um, in the 96 certified document. It actually is not required to have a specific plan. Uh, the other PDs, I, I believe, just, I think almost all of them require a specific plan. This one does not. In fact, the, uh, certified LCP refers to this one as a kind of a modified general commercial area. And the modifications are pretty limited to setbacks, in particular acknowledging the gateway component of the site, which is that, uh, corner at the south end of, end of the triangular shaped property and setbacks from Main Street. And we find that all of those things are really manageable without having a PD. It's one parcel, it has one owner. It doesn't, um, really need to have, um, more, more going on about it than it does. So, uh, that was one that Coastal Commission staff was really comfortable with it, um, even though it wasn't developed, having it move into a, a designation consistent with what the PD was directing. Uh, let's go to Andriati because it's, um, it's so interesting. And here we are. Um, okay, so the sum of these five, one, two, three, five different sections is right now the Andriati PD. It includes Carter Park. So we're proposed, we already had proposed to put Carter Park into a park designation. He did not need to sit in a PD. Um, and then it has Stone Pine Center, which is in that orange color, um, where there's a combination of really strip commercial uses with, uh, surface parking and then some office, um, buildings up towards the back and the post office. There we're, we're proposing the general commercial land use designation installed. Then the Cypress Cove, um, townhomes are, um, have an, have a yellow boundary. And, um, those are proposed for, I believe, the medium-density land use designation. Then note, we, we had a, um, Brittany, I think we didn't change the little boundary.
Yes, I apologize. This is the correct boundary up here. It, um, did not get carried.
Okay, that's okay. So I'm going to explain that briefly. Um, so the, um, kind of russet color is the Mobile Home Park land use designation. And that is the south side of the Hilltop Mobile Home Park. The intention had, is simple, is simply to give the existing use a consistent designation with what it is. It's not proposed to be expanded. Now, those lavender colored parcels are, um, there's more to it. Brittany, can you put your cursor on the little, uh, the top of the warehouse building in the aerial? Yes, okay. So that would be the last parcel that would actually go into the lavender color. That is light industrial. And right now, those Highway 92 frontage properties do not technically have access because the PD requires that access to all the properties in the PD should be delivered via Main Street. And that's been a, that's been a challenge because it's, there's no way to get there. So, um, have the way that it's been developed. We also, um, heard and, and the commission has advised in the General Plan Advisory Committee. Um, I know we talked about it and there's been worry about how do we get the right kind of land use on Highway 92 where we have so much, uh, traffic congestion? So what, what's appropriate and what's scaled right? That is why we're proposing light industrial. Um, it can be a much lower trip generator and the hours are, tend to be really offset from, uh, visitor-serving times on the weekends. Uh, we've also introduced a live-work concept at a very low density of only five units to the acre. If, if the type of light industrial use qualifies to have, um, a live-work type of space with it. Um, so that was a direction, um, that we really felt was from the commission. But we also had input from public, um, who were, who were concerned about access. We showed this in the plan development earlier, we had more housing in it then. And, um, the feedback about traffic and really the, the kind of the context of the site, um, led us to this, this other approach. And, uh, the idea from the PD that we, uh, we originally drafted was to consolidate access for those parcels. That idea doesn't need to go away if you don't have a PD. We still have policies about consolidating access when we can on Highway 1 and Highway 92. And this is something we've actually talked to the property owner about. Um, and there's, there's, I think, two property owners in particular here, but, but one is really willing to, to do that. So these are things that you can, um, you can still, as a commission, look at through coastal development permit review. And we, we are concerned about how limited, um, Happening Bay's light industrial lands are. There's just not very many acres of it. And, uh, we think, we think this is, uh, one of the most appropriate sites that we, we were able to identify for it. It can look great. Um, this is the other thing, people have a vision of what, what industrial looks like and it can look absolutely fantastic. Um, so we'll, we'll be mindful about, uh, how, how to do that. All right, enough about that one, it's interesting. Uh, all right, so what's left? There are three substantially developed plan developments that continue. Uh, Pacific Ridge and Ocean Colony are two that we, we heard a lot of input about and there was concern about, um, moving them to land use designations. And we, um, we were able to really work that out in, in talking to the Coastal Commission about why it was important to maintain their PD status. The Matucci, um, PD could potentially move into, um, either the low or the medium density residential designation, but it is not fully built. And there's, there's a little bit more to go and we think it needs to have, um, the ongoing attention that the past neighborhood agreement and other important components of that planning um, brought to that PD. So this is staff's recommendation to also keep that one. Um, it's just not right to, to, um, convert it to a standard land use designation. That leaves you with these seven substantially undeveloped plan developments. And I think, um, most of them are on, well, it's kind of half and half. You've got, you've got three on the east side of Highway 1 and four on the west side. Um, we can, we can get into that in just a minute. I gotta catch up with my notes for a second, Brittany, if I get there. Okay, so, um, the intent here was to address the Coastal Commission, um, staff input as well as frankly, the PD landowners and how the PDs are now presented. We were, we were asked to back off on, uh, the policies and the build-out and some of the, the details that we had in the previous draft. At the same time, um, while making the narrative, uh, retaining a high-level discussion of constraints, we are also asked to present the vision, uh, more clearly than we had before. So we've, we've tried to do that fairly simply, you'll notice these are much shorter. The graphics were removed and, um, there are no policies left for, for each of these as individual PDs. The suite of policies that apply to all these substantially undeveloped PDs remains, that's still there. And, uh, we tried to make sure that they comprehensively address any of the individual, um, policy concerns that we had, um, thought about with the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. And we're eager to hear if, um, we got that right or if we missed anything. Uh, but that was a, a real focus of what we were doing. Um, the build-out estimates that we worked on for those PDs remain helpful with our infrastructure modeling. Um, and the, the concepts around phasing, potential replating, um, visual resource protection, open space requirements, uh, green infrastructure requirements. All of those things that you really wanted to see in, in these PDs as well as, um, uh, making sure that they were appropriate for multimodal transportation connections. The idea that if there was residential development, um, over a certain number of units, that it brings its own public park with it. Um, those kinds of things that were very important about holistic neighborhood planning for PDs. Should they, should they become such a thing? Um, whether they're, they're small scale or medium scale. All of that went into your factor policies or was, um, kind of reinforced. So we think you will recognize your own, um, input there and contributions. And that this, this document will, will still look like your plan. But that's, that's how it was shifted, uh, into those factor policies.
May I ask a question, two clarifying questions? Give you a chance to catch your breath, Jill.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so to, just to clarify on, um, some of these undeveloped PDs, who specifically asked you, which organization specifically asked you to back off on the build-out? Can you clarify?
Um, three different property owner groups and the Coastal Commission staff. The Coastal Commission staff was quite specific about it. And that, uh, conversation with them started from the letter that they, they sent to us last, I think it was September. And so they, they were really focused on that. And then the, um, three different, uh, property owner groups were concerned that we had that we had been too prescriptive. They wanted the chances, property owners, to bring in their own master planning and have it evaluated on its own merits. And we completely appreciate that. That's, that's, that's fine. That doesn't mean that the constraints that had been identified aren't there anymore. We, we know where they are to some extent. We'll probably find more. That's the nature of land in Happening Bay. Opportunities that align with priorities or if we have a visual resource area or something else that's really, really important about a property, that's still identified as well. So we, we hope that you see that. We know you're going to have to take a careful read of each of these. And that's, that's where it came from.
And then similarly, on the Dolores development area, you came to the property owners. You made recommendations on what you thought would be appropriate and some changes you thought would work well. And those owners declined and preferred to stay in their current status.
That is most of the story. But the other part of the story is that we are, we're finding wetlands in the area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all the questions I had.
Okay. All right, Brittany, what slide am I on?
I think we are on 18.
Thank you. I think maybe we, I think we did that. Okay, and I am winding down. I have a few more, and then you will be graced by Brittany in just a few minutes here. Until then, I'm very excited to talk to you a little bit about the workforce housing overlay. We spent a lot of time thinking about how to do this well. In your previous draft, we called it the priority, I think we called it priority housing overlay. But we moved on because what happened in the public dialogue is everybody called it workforce housing. And we, we like to call things what they're supposed to be called. And if that's what the public's going to call it, we, we would agree. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be confused with priority as a coastal act priority use. So we thought this was helpful. I am going to talk a little bit about that, though, in a couple of slides from now. We also had about, capacity for about 200 units in your previous draft. And the impression that staff got following the city council study session was that they liked it. It aligned with their intent for affordable housing, which one was that it be truly affordable. And so you'll see some very specific direction about affordability levels. And if acceptable, there's, there's some state law that bumps into this, that when possible, deed restrictions would be required and maintaining this housing for a long time. That because the housing is part of this overlay, which gets combined with the underlying land use designation, it really aligns where people work and live for a number of these categories. Not all of them. Some of them are, have different kinds of flexibility. But for the ag properties in particular, open field ag, which would have an agriculture or a rural coastal designation, we would expect to see folks who lived in that housing to work right there on that property or a collection of properties because we're, we're not focusing this just on a parcel. We're focusing it on the farm. We are suggesting that you think about some language that we added here to allow for housing for folks who work in the industry coastside because we know there's such a shortage of this type of housing. That, that was brought forward. We're not hiding it. We're telling you about it. So think about it, please. Similarly, for the horticulture business designation, that's where all the city's greenhouses are, has similar rules. In both cases, those designations have a maximum number of acres. And I should be very careful about saying acres because it's not very many. It's, it's one for some of these designations, and it's two for open field ag that could be used. And the farms would have to be larger for those amounts of lands to be used for this housing. You will notice that the density for the open field ag housing is lower than the density proposed for a smaller footprint of horticulture business housing. This is intentional. It was scaled, I scaled every farm and made sure that it would fit. And the intent here is that horticulture businesses, those properties have a lot of development on them now. They're, they're quite covered with greenhouses. So to make housing fit, we, and we don't want to use a lot of the land for it. We are encouraging a smaller footprint and a little more density and also recognizing that they tend to be fairly labor-intensive businesses. So they need, they really have more employees than the open field ag generally. Not, not every case and not every season, but broadly. And then in the ag, the most is, the open field ag is two acres with a lower density. The other designation that this can be combined with, that would be really keeping folks working where, or living where they work, is the public, the regional public recreation. And this is already happening in your city. This is, this is actually the inspiration. Or the workforce housing overlay was when the state parks had to demolish one of their ranger houses that was near the bluff. And the LCP right now says they can't replace it. They can have no more housing. And it, it doesn't seem to be consistent with supporting that use to not continue to be able to have rangers and these employees near at hand in an area that's so expensive to live. And so that was work that we, we started thinking about. How much do they really need? They have six units now. They lost one. They used to have seven. And this is not a big wow. The capacity of this is 10 units for them. So it's, it's a delta of four over what they have now, three more than what they used to have. There is also, Cemetery County has property where they would like to have a few units. I'm not sure if they're going to be able to work it out because they don't necessarily restrict their employees to be, when they, when they have ranger housing, they don't always tie it to a site where the rangers work. You will note that we think, we think that's important. The intent for this housing is to not house somebody who works in a park on the side of the hill where I'm, I'm talking to you from right now. That is not, not the purpose of it. It's, it needs to be coastal. We're not, we're not adding another commuting car with, with your out commute. So that, we feel very strongly about it. We may hear some negative feedback from the county. They really hoped for, for this. But we have tried to collaborate, and we, we feel good about what we put forward to you and look forward to your input on that. The last ones are the public facilities and institutions. Now, this gets, this is where it gets a little bit more varied. And I will talk schools first, specifically for the public schools, Hatch, Cunha, and the Happening Bay High School. Instead of scaling this like we did with the ag uses and the heart uses, these were done like the regional public rec, where we simply cite a number. It was based on what we studied for the different school properties, what each site could probably reasonably accommodate or if it was accumulated together. So a school district might not want to put housing on more than one school site. They probably would, would want to cluster it onto one site. But we can't predict everything in a 20, 30-year plan. And so we tried to keep their options open for how they would do it with a CDP, but put a cap on how much scale to what we think is appropriate. And then the final category for this combining designation is the public facilities and institutions. It does not apply to every public facility and institution on the map. They are called out pretty much by their addresses. There are two churches, and there's the Ted Agcock Community Center campus site. It does not apply to the SAM property. This does not apply to the city's hopefully soon-to-be-purchased 880 Stone Pine. Brittany, can you put the land use map back up so we can highlight the public facilities real quick? Excellent. Okay, so public facilities are blue. And so most of what you're seeing are school sites because they have the most, they have the biggest properties in this designation. But the Lutheran Church property out off of Highway 1 over there actually is in a public facility designation, and we specified 10 units. Actually, I think it's nine. We specified a base number of units and assumed that they would qualify for density bonuses. So the assignment was meant to plan for and know what the density bonus would entail. And then the Our Lady of the Pillar Catholic Church site on Kelly and Church Street over here, they actually have a very large piece of property behind their church that I'm sure everyone has noticed that I, it would be a wonderful housing site. We really think it's a good housing site. It's part of a neighborhood. It's flat. It's not in Escha. And I believe we put on the order of 50, 50 units there. You'll see that in your build-out table, and you'll also see it in your, your policies for that. And then that Ted Agcock, we just noted a few units. It's not a lot. So that is the whole of the workforce housing overlay. You need to be patient to work through the different pieces of it in your Chapter 2. It's a land use designation that is defined upfront with all the other land use designations, but it is not mapped. It's applied through policy. It is then brought up generally in the residential designation section that follows the PD section. And that's where the affordability requirements are laid out because they're applicable to all of this housing, whether it's, no matter what, what the underlying designation is. And to get to the brass tacks for what happens in each land use designation, you would go to the rural coastal policies and see how it applies or the recreation or the public facilities. So it, we tried to put it all together, and it doesn't work very well because you really need to have some very specific land use, relevant build-out policies associated with it, depending on where it is, because there's different sensitivities. So a lot went into that. We also have some state law caveats that Winter supported our staff report to give you some more background on that. So if you have questions about that later, the Deputy City Attorney will be happy to field those questions. And I'm on my.
Through the chair, can I just ask one other question?
Yes, Rick.
If we go back to the previous slide, reading through the final version of this document we have in front of us, which is a lovely document. One of the key things I see here is when it comes to workforce housing, we're, we're not going to be overly prescriptive with, at the local level. We have to comport with state laws that address workforce housing, especially if it's more than five units. And I just wanted to confirm that. That's what was my interpretation of what I read here. But I think it's an important thing for the community to understand that this is an important issue. And when we put this into our planning documents, we're rolling into the laws that the state and the federal government have put in place so that you don't have all of the abuses that have happened in the past with workforce housing. So I just wanted to call that out and get a confirmation from you on that point, Jill. And if I've made any mistakes, as always, please correct me.
I'm going to ask Winter to delve in because she's done so much research on this, and you'll, you'll get the deeper answer.
Yeah, I was going to give the short answer, which was to confirm Commissioner Hernandez. There are state laws, and the way we've set it out in the staff report tries to explain what those state laws do. And basically, we just wanted to make clear that there are limits in terms of what the city, regulations that the city can impose, including additional fees and things for certain types of employee housing that are already set forth in state law and, as you mentioned, regulated by other entities. And so we wanted to make that clear, especially since it, I think it, the comments that staff has received make it clear that folks want this to be affordable. And there are going to be areas where, under state law, that may be difficult, if not impossible, to impose that restriction if the employee housing otherwise satisfies the state law and is regulated at that level. But, so that's the slightly longer answer, and I'm happy to answer more questions if we want to get into it later as well.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, next slide, Brittany. This is a really important theme also for just our compliance with the Coastal Act and what you're going to see when you see Chapter 3 coming out next week. We've tried to better flesh out what, what are the Coastal Act priority uses and making a note that the Coastal Act does not define them. And so we've cobbled together as much guidance as we can from Coastal Commission documentation. And I think you'll see some good development about this in this updated draft review. None of these surprise. These are the, these are kind of the high-level topics. They are what we think of as the tier one. These are the ones that get the priority water connections. These are the ones that get public works capacity. And there are specific Coastal Act policies about supporting these priority uses in advance of other things. So it's really an important working through the document, in particular in Chapters 2 and 3, and frankly, 4, the ag chapter, which Brittany's going to cover soon. And then the intent to have a local priority use of affordable housing. We would see this as tier two. It would be in advance of non-priority uses, such as market-rate housing or non-residential development that is not a Coastal Act priority use. We will get into this quite a bit more on the 11th. Working, go ahead, next slide. On your, your Public Works chapter, it has, we, we got a lot of requests for more modeling, infrastructure modeling, and we've been working very hard on that. And you will, you will see it. You will also see reservations of capacity for Coastal Act priority uses, which we did not put out in the first draft. And we have modeled those, and you will, you will have a chance to review that work and give us guidance about that.
Excuse me, Jill?
Yeah?
Just a moment for the, my colleagues, before we move into the next chapter, I just wanted to get a sense of whether Rick has jumped in with a couple of clarifying questions as, as in the form of the conversation. And I, I know that those were. And I, I know that those were a valued immediate contribution. I wanted to find out whether any of the colleagues had clarifying questions on this chapter or they preferred to wait and hear the rest of the chapters and, and then bring their questions. It's a long presentation and stuff in Chapter Two will be a long time ago after we've talked about Chapter Nine. So colleagues, did you have any clarifying questions? Did you prefer to hear the whole presentation?
Well, thank you for asking, Chair Benjamin. I guess I don't really have a preference. I, I'll be comfortable either way.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, no questions here at this time. I would support moving forward.
Commissioner Puller?
Same as, as Brian.
Fantastic. Okay, I concur. Thank you for letting me ask, Jill.
Of course. Thank you. So this is my last slide and the other things that you will see in Public Works to stay tuned for. If you noticed that we didn't talk about vehicular circulation in Chapter Five, Coastal Access and Recreation, it's because we moved it to Chapter Three. So stay tuned for that. And the other thing we're modeling, and this really came from the Commission. This is not a Coastal Act requirement, but we're modeling the infrastructure capacity needs for the town center. We think that's, that's really important again, going back to that whole concept of what, what is good planning for Half Moon Bay at this point in, in its development life? And I am done and I'm looking forward to having Brittany continue. She's going to present all the rest of the chapters.
Thank you, Jill. Can you guys hear me okay? Thank you.
Actually, if you could move a little closer to the mic, Brittany, I'm getting a little reverb.
How's that?
I don't know. I, I understand you. I just want to be sure everybody's clear. If it gets weird, we'll, we'll mention it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the main changes made to Chapter Four are primarily from the errata sheet that went out after this chapter was drafted last year. And so you'll see those changes carried forward for the final draft. And there are a couple of refinements based on public comment and coordination with the Coastal Commission. So the Coastal Commission staff really strongly was pushing for, for greater protections for our ag lands and to reflect Coastal Act requirements, which really, really ask you to concentrate new development in existing urbanized areas. And we have a unique condition in Half Moon Bay where we have, we're entirely within the coastal zone and subject to the Coastal Act. And we're almost entirely within the urban boundary. So what we have clarified with Coastal Commission staff and, and in the chapter is how the town center boundary is really a second tier urban boundary for Half Moon Bay's context. And where inside the town center, we are anticipating preferring new development to occur. Outside the town center, we are strengthening protections for, for ag lands in a number of different ways, as Jill discussed with the changes to the PDs and the new rural coastal land use designation in Chapter Two. And in Chapter Four, it really comes up in the policies for conversion. So really limiting the circumstances under which you can convert an ag use outside of the town center to a new non-ag use. And then what mitigation would be required if the conversion was allowed to occur. And you'll also see the definitions at the top of this chapter clarified a bit. They are working well in conjunction with the Chapter Two policies for permitted uses in the agriculture and rural coastal and horticulture business land use designation. So it helps to look at that side by side and you'll see that in the glossary coming next week as well. All right, I think that's it for Chapter Four. And for Chapter Five, we had really great feedback about this chapter. It is not, not substantially changed. And Jill noted that the vehicular access section is moved to Chapter Three. So it's working in conjunction with the circulation discussion in that chapter a bit better. You'll note that some programmatic policies have been proposed to remove, to move to the circulation element. And otherwise this chapter will look substantially similar to the last draft. And we did want to note the first figure, Figure Five, One has been updated along with the corresponding narrative in the Chapter Two, clarify which coastal access routes would be considered primary where they lead to a formalized coastal access parking area or secondary where they do not. But there is opportunities for, for such formalized improvements in certain cases. So you will see that distinction clarified a bit better. And then in discussion with the Coastal Commission on their lower cost visitor serving accommodation standards. So we came out with a policy consistent with their guidance on requiring a new high cost accommodation that does not include any sort of lower cost to provide a component of lower cost. We initially were proposing that component to be at 15% where Coastal Commission let us know that their most recent standard has been in the range of 25%. So after some discussion, they were open to, to a range, which is what you'll see in your final draft of 15 to 25 to leave room for more flexible site planning and decision making where there might be opportunities to, to provide other ways to offset the, the high cost accommodations, such as improvements to the bike pad, circulation system, or free hotel shelves. Chapter Six has slimmed down quite a bit. You'll see that the special status species tables for plants and animals are moved to a new appendix C. And that will be coming next week along with the state and federal regulations discussions. Also moving to a new appendix that you will see next week. So that will also be part of the document, but really helps get, get to the point in Chapter Six. So otherwise, the, where there were programmatic policies, they were either revised to be more actionable or moved, proposed to move to a, to the open space and conservation element of the general plan. And last bit of truncating came from removing the natural shoreline section that was between the biological resources and water quality sections. In the previous draft, these topics are all thoroughly covered in either the Esha policies for cliffs and dunes or in the environmental hazards, Chapter, Chapter Seven for Bluff Top Development. Couple other important things to note for Chapter Six. The Biological Resources Section and Esha Discussion has been restructured based on the Coastal Act structure a bit better. So there are three main categories of Esha that are presented and structured in the narrative and the policies that you'll see. So those three categories are terrestrial Esha, wetlands, and watercourses. So terrestrial Esha includes the marine environment, sand dunes, sea cliffs, coastal terrace prairie, and non-aquatic habitat for special status and unique species. And there are specific policies for terrestrial Esha as a whole that would apply to each of these different habitat types, including for buffer requirements, development standards, and permitted uses. And then separately, wetlands and watercourses have their own set of policies for, for these things, for permitted uses, buffers, and standards for development in these areas, as is consistent with the, with the way that the Coastal Act policies allow different types of development to occur in these areas and require different protections for these aquatic resources. Of note, the Coastal Commission Staff Ecologist provided us with some really interesting guidance on how to designate coastal terrace prairie as Esha. We wanted to highlight that for you. So since there are such few remaining native grassland habitats in the coastal zone, the definition that they provided and that you'll see in their, in our final draft, so it's a really low bar of needing only 10% cover of native grasses and forbs and less than 25% cover of shrubs. And finally, the Esha buffers have also been revised based on Coastal Commission input. And they set very strict standards for when a buffer can be reduced and what it could be reduced to. And they rely on really strong site specific evidence from the required bio report, which has, the policy that requires the bio report has also been bolstered to add additional information that would be helpful in, in review of these habitat types and for determining how best to protect them through a buffer. And specifically, the policies require that any reduced buffer must provide at least an equivalent protection to the, to the previously stated minimum. The habitat maps are also updated. And so this is the Habitat Types Figure, Figure Six, One. The main things to note here are that coastal terrace prairie was added as a habitat type. That's in the black outline here. And the agriculture symbology was changed a bit. So it's more visually distinct from the landscape habitat types. So this has a bit of a stripe to it now, so you can tell the difference a bit better. And so Figure Six, Two, the Habitat Eshas Figure, has a couple of changes. Most notably, it includes the recent wetlands delineation that Jill was going over a bit for the Glen Creek property. It includes areas, the Lower Beechwood property as well, next to Highway One. And we also added several drainages that had been missed from the first draft that are covered under the city's dish maintenance agreement with Fish and Wildlife. So those are included now in the yellow dashed lines here. We removed several wetlands from private properties that had been visibly noticeable to our biologist when he was doing his site visits for this, for this mapping update. But we do not have formal delineations for these areas and decided it was most consistent to, to pull those off the map. And of course, where there would be any development proposed in that area, we would require that site specific study to occur. And last thing for this map, there's been minor modifications to the MAP Legend language to better reflect the chapter terminology. Okay, so first, Figure Six, Three, the Special Status Species Map, several changes as well. Of note, the California Red Legged Frog Critical Habitat Area that was used from the first draft, that was a shape file that's provided by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They mapped this at a really broad stroke level that for our jurisdiction, it covered already developed areas, areas that we that it didn't make sense to, to show as Esha and to be consistent with our mapping protocols for, for this update. So we revised that to potential Esha. Again, this would, of course, be studied further with any site specific development proposal. But the potential Esha designation was really more applicable for that broad stroke mapping. We also added a Western Snowy Plover nesting site that was confirmed on the state beach up near the Miramar neighborhood. Little blue dot here. And the Red Legged Frog and San Francisco Garter Snake Habitat on Beechwood was revised to potential Esha. Similar, similar to the Critical Habitat situation, we did not have site specific evidence that this was Esha for these species up to the exact parcel lines. We know that it is very likely mostly Esha, which is consistent with our potential Esha mapping designation here. And the mapping to the parcel lines does have implications for the, the neighboring properties and their existing developed areas. We do want to note there, there are no protections being removed. In fact, they are being enhanced really through the new open space for conservation land use designation that's being applied to the, to the entire Beechwood property and the lower portion of Glen Creek. Okay, and then Figure Six, Four, the summary map was updated to reflect the changes from the previous two maps. All right, Chapter Seven, Environmental Hazards. You'll note it has a new name to reflect the more broad categories of hazards that, that we discussed in the chapter and that had potential to occur in the planning area. So based on discussion with the Coastal Commission, their input was to reorganize the chapter based on hazards that occur at the shoreline and hazards that occur inland from the shoreline. So this chapter may look very different, but it has much of the same content. It's just been moved, moved around a bit. Where there were any programmatic policies, they were either revised or proposed to be moved to the safety element or they will be implemented there. You'll see a new table for sea level rise projections based on best available science from the Ocean Protection Council's 2018 Sea Level Rise Guidance Document. And lastly, the fuel modification policies that were previously a bit, a bit spread out in Chapter Six and Chapter Seven, they are now only located in Chapter Seven and combined and clarified. So they are no longer in, in two places. Eight, the main change was refocusing the chapter on the Coastal Act protections. So the Coastal Act does not provide protections for historic resources. So the narrative and policies around those historic resources are proposed to move to a community preservation element, as Jill mentioned earlier. So the chapter is really refocused on what the Coastal Act does require protections for, for archaeological and paleontological resources, including tribal, Native American tribal resources. And the figure was then updated to reflect this as well. So this is really, really a new and improved version of your existing LUP's archaeological resources area. It's a very fuzzy map that has now been clarified. So this was done in coordination with a cultural resources expert from SWCA. He did a cultural resources records search for us at Sonoma State and worked with a JAS consultant to, to help us develop this map here. Okay, last chapter. And this chapter looks mostly the same. It has been streamlined a bit. And this chapter looks mostly the same. It has been streamlined a bit and. Restructured to better reflect Coastal Act terminology and structure as well. And so you'll see those changes. And carry forward on the map that I'll show in a moment. The visual resource area designations have been more clearly stated, defined, and described. As well as mapped. So of note on this map, you'll, we'd like to point out that the. Agricultural lands have been taken off, so they are no longer designated visual resource areas. We heard from several property owners that this was just an onerous implication for them. So we. And one of the main things that we want to do in this in this update is protect and support our ag resources. And and their operations. So we have discussed in the chapter that we recognize the aesthetic value of agricultural lands. And their heritage and connection to to the town's. Visual context, but it is not a visual resource area for the purposes of this chapter. Of course, the soils themselves and the operations are protected and supported through chapter two and chapter four. Everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Brittany. Jill, did you have any additional remarks before we move into clarifying questions?
I I don't, other than to just acknowledge Brittany's depth and breadth on our land use plan update. You saw that demonstrated there. The slide before you is our typical order of operations. I would like to do a quick peek ahead at the next slide in case anyone who's who's participating doesn't make it to the end. And just be real clear about next steps. We'll we'll be back in two weeks to have more of what we're about to do with clarifying questions, public comment. A whole lot less of staff presentation, although we will present public works and build out. And then your public hearing is scheduled for August 25th. And we are also targeting, we're we're ready to notice. City council hearings as well. There's September 29th. A date, it would be a special meeting for them. That's a fifth Tuesday. And then it would be the first part of a two-part public hearing process with city council. So we want to make sure everyone sees those dates and then we can stand down and hopefully take some clarifying questions. And we will be taking, as usual, you you have multiple note takers who will who will get a public comment down in detail as well as your discussion. So if you see us looking distracted, it's because we're typing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much, Commissioner Hernandez. Did you have a an opening question? Maybe he didn't.
Thank you.
Okay, he keeps raising his hand.
All right, colleagues, who would like to address this on this? I can't see participants right now. Let me switch to, I don't see hands up. So Bridget, I'll need your help with that. For some reason, I'm not getting the the view where I can see multiple screens.
I see no one in our panelist group here in the meeting that's raising their hands. If anyone wanted to speak, they can.
Well, I have a couple of questions. If no one else wants to speak, I'll leave some dead air here for a couple of seconds before I ask my questions.
Anyone?
All right. So I just wanted to check back on in a couple of areas because I think that the public will probably be interested. But I wanted to confirm, going back to the discussion about workforce housing. I remember, if I heard that correctly, there were, there could be legal limitations that make it difficult for us to require affordable. In many cases, did I hear that correctly?
I can I can take that one. It it might not be many cases. This isn't sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. And the State Employee Housing Act is a little bit complicated. But we've tried to summarize kind of the major areas where the state has basically said this type of housing. Is must either be considered in agricultural use, where there can't be any additional fees imposed. Or is and must be considered like a single-family home, and there are other limitations. So we could certainly provide some more information about how the two map on to each other. At this point, we just wanted to note that, you know, the the policies that I think staff have crafted in response to comments. Are really addressing, you know, the concerns and issues and desires that they have heard expressed. And that there just might be by dint of state law imposition on us, some limitations on our ability to carry out every single policy. For certain specific projects.
Okay, and then one other follow-up question related to that was, can you help me understand how? What effect, if any, that has on the way we would interpret this housing with respect to measure D?
That we haven't sort of parsed out yet, and I think we would probably need a little bit deeper dive into. You know, measure D is not an extra fee, but there are some limitations on making these types of employee housing jump through extra permitting hoops. So we would want to want to look at that. So we could add that if if you're interested in more information about how these two things work together.
Yeah, I think the public will want to know. I'm not, maybe that's less of a clarifying question than an opaque question. But the goal here is to try to get some clarity on that. I'm happy to step back if other commissioners wanted to ask questions.
I I won't ask any clarifying questions, but I will just say thank you to city staff. Had a chance to review this document. While it is quite substantial, it is well-written. In particular, the introductory chapter provides a fantastic overview of the existing. The existing policy that we have today, how we got here, and what the new document takes us to. Based on the guidance from city council and other policy things that have been remarkably consistent. Since 1980s, when this thing was first put into place. So I just can't say enough about the hard work that's gone into this, and I'm super appreciative of the document. I think that we've reviewed this many, many times. We've gotten many, many pieces of feedback. And I I don't think there's anything of real substance that I can add at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Hold, I thought I saw you pop onto the screen. Did you want to speak up?
Well, I was just gonna basically say the same thing that Commissioner Hernandez just said. Very much appreciate the work that's been in here. And I think. You know, looking at this document and where and where we started, but particularly our our current general plan. And where we've come from there is, I mean, you've done Yaman's work and and. Really, really. Very. A concise, impressive document. And we just got this recently, so we'll be continuing to review. But definitely appreciate all the staff's work. I do, I do recognize that, you know, we're in this situation where. You know, we're, there will be aspects that aren't necessarily going to make everybody happy. And and I'm always concerned about some level of sort of analysis paralysis. And and really hope that that we can, you know, work to move forward to to adopt this and get this in place. But I think this is, you know, really nice document where we're at. So I don't have any clarifying questions at this point. Looking forward to hearing the public's comments. And and then continuing the discussions. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions from you, Commissioner Poga?
Not at this time. I'll I'll wait till after the public.
Understood. And Steve?
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of, I hope, quick clarifying questions. I'm curious, in in chapter two, we talk about the ongoing focus on development that's consistent with the Coastal Act. Including new new development where there already is development or or I think the exact words are in close proximity to existing development. I'm I'm curious if perhaps perhaps our attorneys know, is there, are there precedents for that? That shed any light on what the what the act means when it talks about in close proximity?
Yeah, I haven't found any, but that's not to say there aren't any. And if there are questions about how that would work out in the implementation. I know there's still some work to be done in the implementation plan as well. And I guess I would maybe ask Jill or Brittany if Coastal Commission staff had any comments or or direction on that. Other than to, you know, comply with the actual language and policies of the Coastal Act.
So just a couple of notes. Brittany covered this when she was talking about agriculture. We will, we will, and we will come back and flesh this out more, but noting that most of the city is within the urban rural boundary. The proximity concept is is important from that perspective. But as Brittany highlighted, the town center boundary is really the the focus of of the development in the town. And so any, really, anything in that area is going to have that mix of of uses from neighborhood to neighborhood. As we've described, from north to heritage to south downtown. So that's the sweet spot, but certainly there are the existing neighborhoods where you're still looking at infill development. I know you asked about it from the perspective of Coastal Act priority uses. The visitor-serving commercial land use designation is applied. Predominantly at the two ends of town, the north and the south end of town along Highway one. And those are in areas where where you already have similar uses present. And in in the work that we did in preparing the modeling, we looked at whether or not those sites had more capacity. So that's the kind of thing that we were we were looking at, but we can we can look into it more.
Thank you for that. If I could ask one other on a totally different topic. Chapter nine talks about visual resource areas. And if I read it correctly, there's language there that when a master plan has been done and substantial development has taken place. And what had been a visual resource area, it ceases to be a VRA. And I wondered what specifically that that means.
So Brittany or I can talk about it. I'm going to talk about it from the master planning perspective. And then we'll see if I need some follow-up from the visual resource chapter. Many of the plan development areas already have a visual resource designation associated with them. Because they are in a location where there's broad ocean views or there is ESHA. Which is also a designated resource or stands of trees, or there's views of upland slopes. So they could qualify in in a variety of ways, and that doesn't go away whether a site is developed or not. That that's still applicable. What we're noting is that in the existing LCP, we really read it quite a few times. And it appears to us that the intent for calling plan developments visual resource areas. Which, by the way, they are not designated as such in the 1996 policy document. They are cited as such in the certified zoning code. But the language about them is really regarding the master planning process. And then the rest of the zoning code chapter. Which presents standards for development in and near visual resource areas does not include any that refer to plan developments. So we actually believe that we're clarifying the intent of the LCP that you have it now. Which is that very careful master planning needs to be done to assure visual qualities of plan development area. And if it's a location that didn't have any other overlying visual resource needs. And the master planning has resulted in appropriate massing heights, clustering or spreading out or whatever, whatever was needed. And to your satisfaction, and then it gets appropriately codified in a in a specific plan. That implementing the specific plan over time and maintaining it will take care of those needs. And the the need to continue to evaluate a developed subdivision as a visual resource area. Would really remain if it was part of a broad ocean view area or something like that. But not necessarily so if it was separate and apart from some of these other special areas. It's it's not necessarily distinguished from another subdivision. Brittany's sort of nodding, so I think.
The only thing I would add to that is that, to build on that, I should say. The visual resource protections are not then removed once the PD is developed. It's the designation of the undeveloped PD as a whole that would no longer be considered a visual resource area. As it's given this designation in chapter seven, sorry, chapter nine. But the master plan would recognize and protect other visual resources like view corridors, broad ocean views, significant plant communities. And and then any new development would have to still comply with. A whatever is required by the master plan for visual resource protections. And B, the other applicable policies of the land use plan for visual resource protection. So there are still policies that apply broadly to any new development to make sure that it's compatible with. The area that it is proposed in, that it doesn't significantly alter natural landforms, things like that. So that would that would apply no matter what.
That makes sense. Thank you for that.
I had to follow-up question along that line.
Let's wait and make sure that Steve's gotten his his questions in, and then we'll come back, Rick.
Yes, thanks. I'm I'm good for now, Jimmy.
Okay, Rick, go for it.
And apologies in advance if my dogs start barking. The, just to clarify, you know, that there are a couple of caveats I heard you mention. In the response, and and one of the things I want to just ask you to double-click on is broad ocean views in your response. And so i- if either of you could just comment on, you know, as we as we think about from a planning perspective. What are the implications of broad ocean views? It's it's one of the things that our community cherishes the most. And there are things that, you know, there's two issues, right? One, we can talk about tonight, broad ocean views. The second one is traffic. Traffic is probably going to be put off to the the meeting next month. But if you could speak to the broad ocean views and the implications for land use, I would greatly appreciate getting a little bit more time on that topic. Thank you.
So Brittany, I was waiting for you to to pounce. I'm going to go ahead and cover it real quick, and then you can add detail again. Let's do a, for example, if there is a site, a planned development site with existing broad ocean views, and it's designated as such on the map in the Chapter 9, the planning for that PD would very likely, and it should, because of all the factored policies that are required for PD planning, would require retention of view corridors, viewing areas. It would control height limits. It would maintain setbacks away from the viewing places. And it would also include an assessment of the build-out of the planned development, a visual assessment, to see before and the after. And such assessments are directed to be prepared by the city. It isn't something where you'd have an applicant prepare it and submit that as the end-all-be-all. We're going to take the sensitive views and display them in different kinds of simulations. What happens then is the backing off of, from what the results of an assessment present, is backing it off into the required standards that would need to be maintained for development in the PD. There could be parts of the PD that would need to be in the open space part of its requirement, the 20% of open space to maintain a view. There may be areas where clustering to a side of the PD that is less visually sensitive would be appropriate. There could be height limits. We specify some height limits, actually, in your PD policies that are carried forward from the 1996 Certified LCP, the 15-foot height limit for some of these areas. So this ends up being part of the ongoing, really, the recipe for how that PD can develop over time until it reaches its build-out capacity, which is restricted by a specific plan. I note that some of the specific plans that you've seen in the past have been, they're pretty simple, and they're PUD plans is what they've been called. We've, I think, presented some examples of other specific plans. They tend to get quite a bit more detailed than what we've worked with in the city before, and would have a lot more controls in them, which perhaps would reassure you if you saw a few of these. So we may send you some, we could send the commission some links to some specific plans that other cities have prepared. The context will be different, but you'll get the gist, and I think it can be helpful.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to do a 180 from the question about the ocean and turn towards the foothills. I noticed that the changes in the figure, this is Figure 9.1, in the maps, that's on Page 919. I think we used to have arrows that pointed up towards the foothills. I still see the view shed. And I'm thinking that it might be worthwhile to summarize the significance of the changes, if any, in the map, and what the ramifications are for policy.
Brittany, you're muted.
Sorry. So the east-facing arrows were removed from the map, the east-facing view corridor arrows, because these protections are provided in a number of different ways. So first, we have clarified policies about how development should avoid obtrusions into the bridge line, where they are located below the 160-foot contour line. And then restrictions on developing above the 160-foot contour line, which is brought forward from our existing land use plan. And of course, the view corridors were pointed down in public right-of-ways, where you cannot visually obstruct anyway. So there are a number of different layers for these protections to be provided in other places.
Okay, thank you. It would have been a noticeable change on the map, and I thought we ought to mention it. I was also glancing at the, I'm a map person, so I was glancing at the map in Chapter 7, the sea level rise flood impact map. And I thank you. I think it's a, by clarifying, by revising it, it brought up more questions for me, which is always fun. One of them was that the map, the legend sort of describes 100-year flood plus sea level rise, but it does integrate tsunamis. There's a tsunami inundation zone, and I'm sure that there's text that says, "Well, we have no idea how frequently these things occur." You know, "This is some scenario that somebody handed us. We're not saying they happen like this on the average of every 100 years," or anything like that. Actually, I guess that's my question. Because when I look at the map, and I just see the heading on the map, I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh." Am I, do I have 100-year tsunami inundation zones here? And I'm sure we don't, but I just want to be sure we're communicating with public quotes being said here.
Yeah, so that goes back to how this chapter was reorganized around hazards that occur at the shoreline versus inland. So the tsunami inundation zone layer was previously shown on the flood map, which I believe is now Figure 7.4 or 5. And now is focused on inland flooding zones. But what we've done here is combined the shoreline flooding risks that we have available to map from FEMA and our coastal future. And you are correct, this is not an exact science. It's based on low-lying elevation areas, other flooding projections and modeling that I do not know nearly enough about. But that is discussed in the chapter as tentative risk.
Okay. And I see the dam inundation stuff moved to Figure 7.6, so that's helpful. I started to wonder why not here, but I get it. You reminded me of coastal. Okay, I have no other big questions. Commission, does anybody else want to ask any clarifying questions before we invite a very patient public who has listened to us for almost two hours now? I'm hearing none. So, last question, does anybody want to bio break, or shall we break right into our public comment? Silence again. Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. And Bridget, I'm going to defer to you for bringing our speakers on, and we look forward to hearing their thoughts.
Okay, so the first person I have is Thomas Gearing, and bringing him over currently. You should be able to talk or speak.
Welcome, Mr. Gearing.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. How are you?
Good.
Okay, so my name is Thomas Gearing. I submitted a letter dated July 27, 2020. I'd like that to be made part of the record. I'm a retired lawyer. I own five lots west of railroad, four buildable sites, two direct ocean views, two ocean fronts, two direct ocean views. My son, grandmother is transferring a lot to him also. So we would have five buildable lots out there. Under the United States Constitution, the test is the highest use of the property. And we believe, I'm also a real estate broker, and I haven't done a survey technically myself, but I've talked to a lot of the local real estate agents. And they said, you know, a buildable lot, 6,000 to 7,500 square feet, in those positions would be worth about a half a million dollars each. So my family's property is worth about $2.5 million. It's interesting to hear everyone speak, but I'm just trying to do my best to communicate to you that the law that is controlling is not the city ordinances or the state law. The law that's controlling is Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal Commission, a 1992 case. And our Supreme Court of the United States spoke very clearly on this point. It is, you are bound by the United States Constitution when it comes to taking people's property. It's not the local rules of the city. It's not the state law. That case, I think you all should really take a close look at it. It's very important for you to fully understand that. At this point, there has been a taking of my property. It's not just a taking, it's a facial taking. What does a facial taking mean? It means that I don't have to do things that are futile. So I no longer have to spend $90,000 on a water permit. I have the money. I'm capable of paying that, and I can pay for the building plans. But I don't have to do what is futile. So as I will proceed with litigation, I do not have to meet those minimal requirements. That's a very important thing for the planning commission and the city council to think about. 20, I've owned the property for 26 years. Taxes have been paid for 113 years, 113 years. I have two sons. They both want to build on the property. They say, "Dad, I can't afford it." So really, what you're saying, just understand the magnitude of what you're saying, that my sons have to leave the state of California. You can't have a family together anymore. And, you know, that's pretty sad. And so what I'm seeing is that 35 years have gone by. I've spent a lot of time, myself, trying to get this land bought out by the state and county.
Mr. Gearing, if you could wrap up your remarks, please.
Oh, boy, I have a lot more to say. But if you want to get to the point, I'll get to the point.
Yeah, we have a three-minute time limit.
What you're doing is unconstitutional. And my son and I, and probably with assistance of Timothy Kusuny, we will be filing a lawsuit to establish our property rights. And you really got to think about it as a council, because my judgment will probably be 2.5 million against the city of Gatlin Bay. And if just the members of the other 100 owners in our district have the same success that I will have, that will cost the city $40 million. The city can't afford that. And this was land meant for residential unit. And I've looked at my property. There's no, you know, water, you know, coast-side wetland. There's no habitat on my lot.
Mr. Gearing, we did get your letter, and we're anxious to hear your thoughts, but you need to wrap it up.
Okay, that's it. Think about that. You know, it's a serious consideration. At this point, after 35 years, I really tried, probably more than most people, even maybe even members on your board, to get this bought out. It's just not happening. City and counties are not interested in taking our one lots away from its citizens. And so I will be filing a lawsuit. I'm sorry to have to tell you that. And think about that, about the city budget. It's going to cost you $2.5 million. And if the other property owners outdo, that's going to cost you $40 million, and if nobody else does it. So it's time to allow single-family resident building in this area. Make an assessment district. And I also said, "I'll give you two of my four lots. I will donate to the city. Half of my property will help you pay for a plan to replot the area." I'm not conceding, because that's still a constitution.
I'm very sorry, but your time has expired too.
Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a beautiful evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bridget?
One moment. The next person I have is Mike Ferrera, and I will bring him over.
Are we allowing our speakers to go video as well if they wish?
Yeah, they can turn on their video if they wish. They have the, they should have the right to do that on their end. I can ask him to have it. There's Mike.
I see him live. Welcome, welcome, Mike.
Put the white hat on so you recognize me. The, there's a lot of things I have issues with, but they weren't necessarily discussed tonight. So I'll reserve on those and try to address what I've heard tonight. And the first is that the recreation zoning west of the railroad right-of-way.
Sorry to interrupt, but do we need to start the timer?
I'm sorry. Thank you. There's lots going on. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of our speakers for being sensitive. We do have 30 people in the audience. That's an hour and a half of comments if we stick to three.
Okay. The county property west of the railroad right-of-way that is in recreation zoning, but apparently might be subject to the workforce overlay. That property was the subject of Measure G in 1989. More than 60% of the people voted that that was to be purchased by the city for park land, and that anything on there had to be passive. And I know that 1989 was kind of a long time ago, but it was kind of important in our town's history. And it would seem to me that if we wanted to change what the people advised, that we should maybe go back to the people and say, "Do you agree?" Additionally, on buffer zones, in which a bio report could go in and say, "This is not productive," or something. The difficulty I have with that is what does that mean if someone has changed the nature of the buffer zone? And the buffer zone needs a chance to restate itself. I've always thought that it makes no sense to have a buffer zone extend onto an adjoining road. Yeah, if that was what we're talking about, that seems fine to me. That's fair. It's not really a buffer zone. But there is, there are quite a few circumstances in this town where activity has compromised the productivity of the buffer zone. And so I don't know how that would play in these bio reports. Regarding the workforce, then, my biggest question is, you know, first of all, I know workforce housing could save traffic, but, you know, less than 40% of the trips are to work. All the rest are shopping and school, et cetera, et cetera. So you don't necessarily gain what you may think you're gaining. And what happens when the work goes away? In the time of COVID, we should be sensitive to that, that the business might fold, and what happens to the housing? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. I appreciate your comments. Bridget? By the way, I don't know if any of the other commissioners had it, but I got the countdown on the screen, but I couldn't see Mike in the video. I don't know if that's, it'd be good if it was aimed at him, and we had it as a sidebar, but I like seeing the speaker if I can.
I could see Mike in the video. You've got a massive...
Yeah, you'll have to scroll. You'll only see like three or four of us. If you scroll down to the corner or the bottom, you'll have an arrow that you can scroll up to see the other folks in the panelists.
And I thought I was such a geek. Okay, carry on.
It's okay. Okay, so next, we have one more. I have Casey Branscombe, so let me just move you over. You see us live.
I think you actually disconnected me, so I'm just reconnecting.
Oh, we can hear you. You're fine.
Welcome, Casey.
Okay, okay, sorry. I think I figured it out.
Yeah, you're here. Yeah, you're, you're here. I can, um. Did you want your video on? Is that what you were trying to do or?
Yeah, I was trying to turn it on.
Let me see if I can ask you to start and see if it'll help that.
Okay.
It should be on the, on the bottom left.
Yeah, I'm trusting it, but it's not undoing it. It's just showing my picture, which is much better than look.
You, you, you want, you don't have to have it on. It's, it's, it's completely up to you, so. If it's not working.
Well, it's kind of weird being a disembodied voice, but I'll give it a go. I don't know why it's not working, but. It doesn't seem to work. Okay. Um, oh, wait, now it says, start my video. So. Did that do it? No. Okay, I don't want to waste any more of your time. I'll just launch into my three minutes. First of all, I want to say that over the last two and a half years, I know I, can you actually hear me? It's hard to.
We can.
I can, we can hear you very clearly.
This is a really, um, like, I understand now why Terry was freaked out by doing this. I. It's not an easy way to communicate something that is so important. I mean, this is my life's net worth in Branscombe Farm. And, you know, it's what you're doing is really important and impacts, you know, how my life goes forward. So first thing I want to say is that, you know, over the last two and a half years that we've been going through this process. And I've been trying to do my part really diligently of reading every word. I have not had the opportunity to read every word of the document that Brittany and Jill have put out. But I have read enough of it to want to say thank you, um, to Commissioner Benjamin and to the other commissioners and to Jill and. And Brittany in particular for at least trying to find a bridge. I mean, as you know, I have come in front of you many times, sometimes in tears, sometimes in anger, each time deeply. And, um, very strongly concerned that in your well-intentioned effort to preserve. You know, rural character of Half Moon Bay, that you're basically taking my property rights, devaluing my property and making it impossible for me to make a living. And I really feel that what you're doing with Rural Coastal has a good chance of finding a common ground. And I'm totally in agreement that the urban reserve, you know, as a concept was probably ill-conceived when it was put together back in nineteen eighty-three. But I just, um, I guess if I could leave you with one thought, because I will provide detailed comments and really go through every policy and understand how it affects Branscombe Farm. And I think I'm about fifty percent of the table nine dot one, you know, in the current LUP that says. Land surrounding Sea Haven, I think I have, you know, seventy-six acres, something like that. Of the land surrounding Sea Haven was designated on conversion for six hundred and fifty residential units. I want to reassure everybody, I have no interest in six hundred and fifty residential units. But I do want to be able to run Branscombe Farm. I want to be able to do that economically in changing circumstances. And I think what's most important to me tonight is that we have integrity about what the promises to Urban Reserve really were. So in my remaining forty-two seconds, I'd like to draw your attention to page one, two, two of your new document. Where you talk about what the current land use plan says. And I want to clarify something, because there's a statement in there that I don't believe is correct. That the current land use plan or the urban reserve requires. A LUP or LCP amendment in order to convert to the six hundred and fifty residential units or whatever it is. And in fact, if you look at the promises and what was written in the plan in nineteen eighty-three, if you look carefully. At what the current zoning says, which characterizes in the implementation of that plan in nineteen ninety-six. There are three conditions, A, B, and C. A and B have been satisfied at least ten years ago, close to twenty-five years ago. And C doesn't say anything about infrastructure availability or what the community wants. It just says that the lands designated urban reserve will not be permitted to convert to urban uses until substantial development has occurred. In the land use plan, well, I'm sandwiched between the Sea Haven subdivision, which has one lot left. And the Frenchman's keep sub, Frenchman's Creek subdivision, I don't know how many lots they have left, maybe one, maybe none. But the point is, those are judgment calls. So I just ask you to please, you know, be thoughtful. Let's find common ground, let's something that can work for the urban reserve farmers. We just need to be able to run our businesses, have our farm worker housing, be able to have flexibility of uses. That preserves the land and the rural character, and I will work with you to make that work.
Thank you very much. Bridgette.
I do not see anyone else that would.
This is the time public where if you want to speak, now is the time to get your hand up or wave at, uh, we'll. Maybe, uh, star, what was it? Star six nine or star six two, uh. That by the telephone call if you want to.
Star six. I do have one more here that just came up. I have, I believe it's Sandy P. And please state your name when you do speak, and I'm going to move you over right now.
Hi, um, this is Sandy.
Welcome, Sandy.
Sandy, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Um, I joined a little bit late, so my question was, what happens to the east of railroad, um, lots? What has been, uh, proposed for them? Are they being taken by the county or?
Uh, we, we don't normally respond in a question and answer style during these hearings, but we'll note your question. Was there more you wanted to ask us?
Um, no, I wanted to understand on those PUDs basically, and I think you you are referring to them as PDs, if I'm not mistaken. So I wanted more clarification on those lots which are east of railroad, railroad. Um, and other PUDs in the Wabgrass Division, please. That was, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, are there any other speakers? And Sandy, if you could provide the information that Bridgette was asking, I don't know if you have everything you need. We certainly can't, you know, we don't want to, we want to be sure we understand your question. And it may require some follow-up. We respect your privacy, but. It may be that it would be useful for us to be able to reach out and contact.
And just if you can send me, send an email to either the emails that are listed on the agenda or mine, bjett@hmbcity.com. For anyone that is actually an attendee to send us emails, um, that would be great, just for clarity.
I didn't understand, Bridgette, what was your question? Uh, I got disconnected for a second and then came back. What, what was that you were after?
Um, if you wanted more clarification, or if you just wanted to send me your complete name would be helpful as well to my email address.
Sure.
Um, it's B JET, J E, B J E T T at hmbcity.com. And anyone else who's speaking tonight would be helpful to send your full name, just so that way we can put it into the record correctly.
True, the chair.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. Uh, yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
I just, um, again, we don't normally do question and answer, but just for the sake of clarity. If the person who has that question could, Mr. Sandeep could just. Mention the specific properties or addresses so that folks can respond. East of railroad is a very broad area, so it'd be great to get specification as he addresses city staff.
To be honest, I was guessing he was referring to western railroad, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I believe it's western.
And I believe he is no longer.
He's still on, so if he would like to speak, yeah.
Yeah, we have not closed the.
It was west of railroad, northeast of railroad. My apologies.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, all right, let me, um. We have one more, it looks like. Let me just scroll up. I have a Mark on the phone or online. Let me move him over. And if you could please state your first and last name before we start. All right, you are on, Mark.
Welcome, Mark.
Do not have Mark. Uh, you're live. I don't know if you can hear us. He's on the phone, so I'm sorry. Let me see if that helps. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were on phone call. Uh, that's better. I think you can speak. No, had his hand raised. Asked to unmute.
Take your time. It's not a rush. Hope we can put this really important. Benjamin, can you hear me?
There he is. Okay, now we can hear you. You're, you're live.
It took a moment to get us plugged in.
Yep, there you are.
Chairman Benjamin, commissioners, staff, I'm Mark Masara, and it's a real pleasure to be able to address you tonight. At first, I really want to express appreciation for all of your work and efforts. Uh, among other things, I represent the dunes at Half Moon Bay. And we are one of your larger PDs. And as you may know, we have a specific plan. Slash master plan application pending before the city. And so we're in the unique, uh, position of attempting to. Have a discussion with you about compliance related to the nineteen ninety-six LUP. And also be sensitive and cognizant to what may happen in this project. And while we're very much looking forward to having a, a discussion with you and your staff. At the community and the coastal commission. Uh, regarding how best to protect coastal resources and and maximize public beach access in the future. On the dunes and surf beach properties. Um, we're very concerned that we not foreclose coastal act priorities with respect to. Our policies that we may adopt, um, with this latest LUP update. And in that regard, um, I'd like to request that you consider some workshops. Where you might be able to deal in, uh, more substance with. How the, this LUP update would specifically affect these larger, uh, PD districts. Your staff has done a bit of this tonight, and I certainly appreciate it, but I think there's a lot more that we could do to provide. Is somewhat better certainty, not only for landowners, but for the community. Uh, again, I really want to thank you, uh, for your efforts and look forward to discussing the LUP update with you further. Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Mark. We, we appreciate the chance to hear your thoughts. Bridgette.
And just make sure that, um, we have, let me double check. I'm not seeing anyone, um, wanting to speak at this moment.
Okay, uh, we'll give one more minute or less than a minute.
I do have, I do have one now, uh, Stephen H. So let me, um, move Mark. I, I'm sorry, he had two things in here.
This is Stephen H. from the Venice Conversations at Oral, I bet.
Yeah, let me, yes. Um, and if he can say his last name, that would be great. Um, I'm going to move him over.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Well, thank you so much. I apologize for the video. I'm, I'm out here in a garage. It's pretty dark. I just want to say I'm so impressed. I really am so impressed. It's the first time I've seen your stuff. And I've seen all of you. I'm so, so blessed to be here in Half Moon Bay. I live at one of the most beautiful places. I don't know what to say. I really don't know what to say. I'm so proud of you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I've, I've got issues here myself. Uh, there's lots of traffic issues. But it's so beautiful here. I apologize for getting so emotional. I can't believe. The format we got today. I just, uh, I'm so thankful for it. Again, if you have any questions that are related to this area. And also, uh, the PUD in Dunes. I would like to share them with you, and you have been receptive. I appreciate it so much. I've worked with all of you, uh, in, in many ways. I've, I've worked with the water quality with Steve on the, as a commissioner here. Uh, one, uh, one time. I'm so happy, uh, what you do. Thank you so much. And, uh, I have my questions, and I I've addressed them already to the city. Thank you for getting me involved this way. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, and we are, we are touched by your appreciation. Thank you that, for that. Um, just to be sure, uh, if you could email Bridgette, so everyone at staff note, who would like to get your feedback, knows how to get back. In touch with you, it would be helpful, because as far as the rest of us are concerned, you're Stephen H. right now. So thank you very much for your comments. Any more late, latecomers?
I have none currently. If anyone would like to, um, they're welcome to at this point here.
While we're waiting and giving them a chance to put their hands up, uh, colleagues, I'm thinking maybe a five-minute, uh. Recession to just stand up and stretch your legs, uh, make that a eight-minute recess. I'm seeing thumbs up, barring objection from the commission. In that case, no other, no other, um. Commenters?
No.
We'll close the public hearing for tonight with the expectation that we're going to reopen it and hear more comments. At both of our August meetings, assuming the commission is open to agendizing that way. And, uh, let's break for eight and then come back and talk some turkey. What do you say? See you in a few.
And the takings concerns of property owners. And that the land use plan. As presented to you now, fully complies with those constitutional obligations. And I wanted to take a step back and just note that this, uh, land use plan is obviously incredibly. An incredibly important planning document for the city, but it is not a final determination of any individual's. Rights to develop particular properties. It is a fairly high-level planning document with a lot of policies. That, uh, need subsequent steps for implementation and permitting. And in the cases of the plan development areas, also a master planning process. And the master planning process in particular is an example of an area where the city has provided a great deal of flexibility. In areas where there might be, uh, some constraints on development to allow property owners. Some creativity and flexibility, uh, and also, uh, a number of policies. Designed to, um, allow for kind of alternative economic uses, uh, on individual lots. In particular, I wanted to note that while we've, this revised plan obviously, um, makes some changes from the existing plan. Uh, the existing land use plan, um, in the west of railroad area, that designation is actually being carried forward. So no substantive changes there, uh, from the existing, um, land use plan. Um, and then, of course, the plan also contains a couple of policies clarifying that nothing in the plan is intended to, nor shall it. Effectuate a taking of private, private property. In violation of the constitutional requirements, and those policies are taken. Almost verbatim, uh, perhaps verbatim from the coastal act takings, uh, savings clause. And so given. So given the, the kind of high-level nature of the plan and the flexibility that's allowed in these plan development areas, there, there's nothing futile for any property owner to go through the process and and come into the city and talk about what is allowed and in there, on their particular property. So I just wanted to make this point to let you know that obviously we've thought long and hard about these takings issues and reviewed the plan repeatedly with an eye toward keeping the city within its constitutional obligations.
Okay, thank you very much. Jill, would you like to, or you and Brittany would like to address any of the other comments we've received?
Yes, thank you. The primary thing we'd like to offer, and we've heard from a couple speakers, is that clearly they, they want more time. And of course, that's, that's why we're introducing as much as we can on the highlights of the changes. But starting next week, we will have office hours and in fact Tara Hatcher, our department assistant, is going to be reaching out to people who've participated a lot in the process that we would expect to want to touch base with us possibly. And we will have Zoom meetings. I can meet folks out on the sidewalk with, we can wear our masks and we can chat, or we can have just a good old-fashioned phone call. But we're, we're happy to do that, and we'll be scheduling those hours. A couple speakers, I, I, I think will want to do that. And if anyone else wants to, just reach out to Brittany or me, and we'll, we'll get you into our, our schedule. I did note just a couple other things as well. We really appreciate the comment about the state parks or excuse me, the county parks property west of Railroad and the advisory measure associated with it. And we will be happy to talk to the speaker more about that and how it relates to the concept for workforce housing overlay on a very limited portion of that area where there is already a house. So, but we want to understand that better and are happy to do that. And then there was a comment about daily trips and we're, you know, Public Works is coming out next week, and then we'll be talking about it at our next study session. We can share some more thoughts that evening about congestion, trip patterns. And the city engineer will be with us at our next meeting as well, so he can help, help too. Those errands trips are interesting, and we, we get the point there. And then there were some very specific callouts of a few things that people have already impressively been able to read through. And so we really appreciate getting page citations. And we'll, we'll look at, look up everything that was brought up into the meeting tonight and give it a check and follow-up. And that's, that's what I have. Brittany, did you have anything else to flesh out on this? Are you, are we covered?
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay, so we're very keen on the Commission's discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, who would like to begin this evening's conversation on the presentation and the public's comments? I see Commissioner Hernandez's finger up.
This has been a long process. I've been at it for at least five years as a Commissioner and longer as a private citizen. Many of my fellow Commissioners, including Sarah, I know, and Jimmy and Brian have all participated in the advisory committees that we had. We've had dozens of neighborhood listening sessions. We've had multiple work sessions, had workshops, a survey, Planning Commission study sessions, and lots and lots of city council feedback on this. Anybody coming to us asking for more time at this point? We've got a few more weeks left, but my view is people asking for more time is the, you know, frankly, the modus operandi of people who are either unprepared or desperate. We've spent a lot of time on this, and we've been very, very careful and diligent listening to public feedback, listening to every community. So I, I think that I think we need to make sure we address any specific comments that come in. But I'm frankly pleased with the five-year work product that this process has produced. I think it accurately reflects the will of the community and the clearly stated policy priorities of our current and previous city councils. I also think that this document does not reflect any substantive or major change with respect to policy with the existing documents that we've got in place. I will say, at first blush, I was a little surprised about some of the changes to agriculture and the rural designation. But having read through the documents and having been educated in this five-year process, I am exceptionally very, very comfortable with where we've gotten to. I think it's a very well-thought-through policy. And again, it respects the feedback from the community, priority of the communities, and it's done in a way that I think has very strong historical foundation. So I don't have any other substantive feedback on this document. I've done my best to read through everything, even this last draft, which we just got last week, or sorry, yesterday. I've really, the physical version of this, I'm very happy with where we've arrived at. And I just want to thank everybody for the diligence that has gone into this document.
Thank you, Rick. Colleagues, who else would like to weigh in? Commissioner Holt?
I'll just jump on Commissioner Hernandez's comments. I agree with everything he said, I think.
Can you come closer to the microphone?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I, I just, I want to support everything that Commissioner Hernandez said. This has been a long process, and I think certainly the, I've been very impressed with staff's responsiveness to the comments that have come in. I think we have heard some of that tonight. I think certainly there, the fact that we're working with a, a general plan that is, you know, obviously outdated and made some really unrealistic expectations that we have, you know, some folks who are not going to be happy with the recommendations. And, and that's, you know, I, I think that's reality. But I think, I think we've done a really good job of capturing the intent of this council, and as Commissioner Hernandez said, the intent of past councils. And really, this has been a, a long process. And I'm just kind of reflective of the fact that, you know, here we are today in this sort of COVID-19 situation where, you know, things are starting to look a whole lot different again. And but I'm still looking at this document, and I think it's still very relevant to what I think the future of the coast side should be. So, so I'm appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of everything that's in here. I think there's been a huge amount of detail that's in here. And, and I want to thank staff. I want to thank Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Chair Benjamin, you guys, what you've done on the, the, the General Plan Advisory Committee or the, the special, special group that you formed and just everybody that was involved in the G-PAC. But, but I think, yeah, we're, we've made a lot of progress, and we're, we're in a good space. I'm looking forward to seeing them, seeing the next couple of chapters and keeping this moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Pogar, you're up.
Great. So I would echo Commissioners Holtz and Hernandez's, their comments wholeheartedly. Yeah, I, I feel like staff did an excellent job incorporating the feedback from the public, the city council, G-PAC, the Coastal Commission, as well as Planning Commission. So I just was really impressed with this. And I especially appreciated, you know, things like in the discussion in the intro chapter, I really felt like that was tremendous work on providing a cohesive framing for the, the rest of the chapters. I also really appreciated the, in the development chapter, the reorganization and making it more concise, clarifying kind of where the policies tie back or connect elsewhere in the plan in the, for the PDs. And I thought you did a great job in balancing the consensus input from the public and the city council, the Planning Commission as well. Within the context, I know that was really challenging with the very clear direction that we got from the Coastal Commission, and that was a really good balancing act. I think you did a great job. So I was really pleased with that. Specifically, I would highlight, I think that it really helped to add a couple key Coastal Act definitions and policies to, to the, the development chapter to really set the stage for it. I would call out, you know, during, including the environmental justice definition as well as the recreation policy. I think that really helps establish and make it clear where the Coastal Act sets some hierarchy in terms of the actual, within the priority uses. And so that was, I think, really helpful context that was needed, and I appreciated that. I think that this document definitely provides a good path forward for the PD in terms of kind of what's required for any prior development area. So I think that it's a planned development area. So I think that's just much clearer, and I appreciate that. That was great. I think the individual PD policies are also appropriately general without ignoring the realities of kind of a changed landscape and realities of what we have now. So, and as well as future conditions. So that was great. I like the inclusion of the, a strong kind of affordable housing policy. I think that that's nice to see taking, you know, putting, essentially getting past lip service on affordable housing. I like to see that. I also appreciated the revisions to the green infrastructure within the, the PDs, that policy to strengthen it and also make it more performance-based. I think I've provided some comments about that previously. So I saw that that was incorporated or changes were incorporated. And, um, yeah, and I really liked it and appreciated the refinements and expansion of the workforce housing, including it was very important, I think, to tie it back to work within the community. So I see that in, and applaud that. I, I didn't make it all the way through the, all the chapters before tonight's meeting, but I did was also looked, reviewed the coastal access. Oh, and I appreciated a lot of the changes in the agriculture chapter as well. I did really look at that as well, including the coastal, the rural coastal designation. I think that was well done. In terms of coastal access and recreation, I know that you guys got a lot of scrutiny from me in the past on this one. It's a very near and dear to me, the coastal access is and public access. And so I know I've been a broken record about certain topics. So I was really impressed with your new policy of giving some teeth to the Coastal Act policies for low-cost visitor-serving accommodations. Bravo. That's very important. I'm glad that you were able to work with the Coastal Commission to kind of make this more flexible and appropriate, depending on what we see coming forward. But I like seeing that policy in there. And a couple other thoughts in terms of the natural resources chapter. I thought that this was just an incredible amount of work going into this, as with all the chapters, but it's definitely appreciated the consolidation of like the ESHA or ESHA, the, you know, and simplifying the buffers. I think the maps are better. I like a lot of great work in this chapter. I also was, something that I had been providing comments on was that I wanted to see the coastal prairie or coastal terrace prairie definition in there, and I really appreciated seeing that incorporated in the work that the staff had done on that. I probably will follow up just to see about, work with staff on refining the definition to really help us be able to accommodate and reflect climate change and other impacts that affect this kind of unique type of habitat, this mosaic habitat of coastal prairie, so that we are kind of in a good position to protect the actual services, the habitat function of coastal prairie habitat, since that's really the value it provides. So, but I'll, but again, great work in, in putting this forward. And then, yeah, I still need to dive into some of the latter chapters. So I don't have specific, any specific feedback on those. I, to see this as like, I really feel like this has done a fantastic job of encapsulating and really reflecting, encapsulating the, the feedback at the detail and at the larger scale or broader view. So bravo, well done. And I guess those are my thoughts at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Pogar. Vice Chair Riddick?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm very grateful to the, the people who've worked so long and hard to, to produce this, this, this terrific document, my, my fellow Commissioners who've been at it longer than I have, especially Chair Benjamin and Commissioner Hernandez, who formed the subcommittee that pushed this forward for a couple of years. And Jill and Brittany, who I'm sure have labored far harder and longer than we will ever know, and the rest of the team. Also, also to our community members who've been a part of this process very diligently for a long time. I, I love that there is that, that, that interest in the city's history and that understanding of the importance of, of this plan, which will guide so many important parts of the city's direction for 20 years. There's so much of it that's good, but I was, I'm very impressed with the narrative in Chapter One. You know, it does a very articulate job of, of laying out the Half Moon Bay's history of, of efforts to implement the Coastal Act, efforts to balance sane growth with the coastal protections that are necessary and the pressure that our infrastructure situation puts on us. That's, I think that's, that's why Chapter Three, the Public Works Chapter, will be very important. You know, the modeling of circulation and, and other infrastructure issues. I really look forward to that. I, I honestly don't have any quibbles with the big ideas that come together to form the, the policies in this. I've got a couple of things which, after these high-level discussions, are really nits. But let me just mention them for the record. In Chapter Five, we talk about trails, and I, there's language in there that, that I believe says the city should build the Pillar Cidos Trail. And to me, at the time, we discussed it, which I think was when the Carter Park improvements were before Planning Commission. The Pillar Cidos Trail, to me, is an exciting concept. There were more than one speaker spoke about the concerns of, of such a thing and how that could be done with protection of ESHA and other valuable habitat. So as far as that and the, what's the other trail? I think the Frenchman's Creek Trail is mentioned in that same breath. I'd be in favor of language that is a little softer than the city should build it. Like maybe the city should investigate and validate if such a thing can, such trails are feasible. I applaud in, in the Ag Chapter and Chapter Four, I applaud the way we brought the supplemental uses into clear focus there. I really hope that, that, that can work for the benefit of some of our agricultural landowners and the residents and visitors who would benefit from, from things like farm stands and ecotourism. I, I think that former Mayor Ferrera is correct about the scope of Measure G, that we should, we should, we should validate that. I believe he's correct about that. But, but if such a thing were to happen, I, again, I applaud the emphasis that Jill put tonight on on the appropriateness of such housing for, for county employees, for instance, to be local workers. I, I think, I've never thought that it made much sense to, to house people who are going to be commuting to San Bruno or, or Redwood. who are going to be commuting to San Bruno or, or Redwood City every day. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much. Thanks again to everybody for all the hard work on this. I, when I, when I read chapter one over the weekend, I thought this should be required reading for everyone in Half Moon Bay who wants to understand how we got there and where we go from here. So terrific work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Riddick. So I agree with all my colleagues. I want to add a few thoughts. Just starting with Steve's last comment about the importance of chapter one. Understanding this document requires an understanding of how we got here. And I felt the same way about chapter one of the existing LCP. That is, the one that came, came into existence in 1985. It was eventually supplemented by an implementation plan. Because it, it was someone, it was another generation's worldview of what development on the coast needed to be to balance the Coastal Act priorities and to allow the community to thrive. And I think one of the messages that I think comes through in this document is their vision wasn't unchangeable. It, it morphed quite a bit in the succeeding 35 years, 40 years. And this document, I think, needs to benefit from the lesson of humility in our belief that we know what's going to happen going ahead. I, I often, when I'm looking at how this document fits the needs of our community, how it matches the requirements of our stakeholders, I think it's important to realize that most of our stakeholders haven't been born yet. And if we focus on the needs of the people who are here and consume resources, solving a problem that we perceive now, that leaves those future citizens in a poorer position to address the new needs that they have, we will have done them a disservice. And I think the, the part of this document that I like the best is that I think it gives us that flexibility. A really good example is the renewal of our belief in the value of agriculture and its future on the coast. Because we are coming in a time where food security as a country could be a thing. And the idea that we depend on food from other places is, you know, that may be a risk that we shouldn't feel like we should just assume there's no risk. Global warming wasn't a thing. Sea level rise wasn't a thing. Saltwater intrusion wasn't a thing. So the ability to craft policies that are cognizant of those things and make some decisions about what we know and the ability to refine as our understanding of the problem gets better is, I think, one of the hallmarks of this LCP that I like the best. I think the maps are a radical transformation. Until 2016, I believe that the existing LCP's habitat area and water resources overlay had not been updated once, not one time, since 1985. And this map tells the truth. And I think that's, the public is entitled to that. It is only right to give them the truth. I think it's showing some respect for private property and leaving areas that we may think that there are resources there, but we respect the fact that those issues have not been resolved the way they would if that developer came in, or that landowner came in and asked for development. And I admire that sense of respect. It's also paired with a policy that says that if a resource is undermined, that doesn't reduce the value of the resource. I would, I would like to just drill down briefly on that point and pick up on a thread that former Mayor Ferrera mentioned. And that was with respect to the value of habitats which may be encountered in the future. And, and also bind it with the comment, I believe it was Commissioner Pogar, with respect to buffers. My perception is that buffers are designed to reflect the fact that nature is a dynamic system. And the location of, say, a wetland or a riparian area may wax and wane in response to natural conditions and things that are happening in the environment. To me, the goal of the buffer, what it means to preserve the biological integrity of a resource is to provide room for that waxing, as well as to recognize when waning occurs. So to speak to the comment about the Pillar Cidos Trail that Commissioner Riddick mentioned in passing, I do think it's a good idea if we could have one. But I think it's important for it to be designed and implemented in a way that allows that riparian area to flourish through its changes. On that subject, I'd like to briefly touch on the chapter five, the Coastal Access chapter. Because I think the, my comment, as I read through that chapter, was tour de force. I thought it represented a, a real understanding of the opportunities and a respect for the limitations and the responsibilities that come with trail development. So I think that it's headed in a really good direction. I think there's always more to do. One of my reactions in many areas of the document was that I find myself looking for standards. You know, we have these very high-level policies. And then, and when you go down in our existing LCP, safer natural resources, there's a long list of standards for what can happen in riparian areas. And it's not to say that we don't have standards. But one of my concerns, one of my nightmares, is that we produce a local coastal program, a land use plan. And the standards by which developer will be judged, the details that implement the plan take forever and a day to exist. So as much as I appreciate the incredible effort, exhaustion really, that we've driven our, our poor staff to, to get us to this point, we are about to begin the process of perfecting this by producing and implementing plan. We are not over the finish line until we have certified an implementing plan. In chapter nine, this was a really big change over the old visual resources chapter. I remember when Rick was chairing the Planning Commission and I was a private citizen, I don't know, maybe seven or eight years ago. We, the commission was struggling with how to make use of the black and white, poorly reproduced copy of the plan that we, we had. And I think this, this is a tool that if we had had for almost any of the visual resource disputes that I can remember taking place in the public, I think we would have found a much easier way to go forward. And I thank staff for not just looking at the plan and saying, how do we translate this? But to step back and say, what does the community want to protect? And how can we write better plans that cover the things that were protected in the past, but do it and the other things the community wants to do in a better way? To me, that's an example in the small of the larger concerns that have been brought forward in this document. And I think that's incredible. It's been a real pleasure to work with you and watch you develop this model based on the understanding of the public. So although I'm holding it together a little better than Stephen H., I just want to say my hat's off to you. I think you've, you've done some yeoman's work. We're not done with the public comment yet. As far as I'm concerned, the comments we received tonight aren't even the tip of the iceberg. We have to assume that in our first meeting in August, and hopefully before and after, we'll get careful, thoughtful, written comments from people who have read the document and have concerns. And as good as I feel about the document, I won't feel good until I know we've heard them and we know how we're going to answer them. So stick with it. Let's find our way to get this job done the right way. There are, there were lots of little details, but nothing profound that I want to bring up at this time. I think it's just a really, it's a really good document. It also called out the need for things that the Coastal Commission wants out of the LCP to go into the general plan. So I think I saw Bob Nisbet on the meeting. So shout out to you, Bob. Prioritize general plan updates to deal with all this stuff. And with that, I think I'm out of gas for now. Does anybody want to take a second round? Additional comments? Okay, staff, do you have things that you would like to get clarification on? Or do you feel like you have what you need for tonight?
Chair Benjamin, thank you. We appreciate being asked. And we are, working on this with the commission has been a great pleasure of ours. And we know that you are working very hard. I, I've never seen a commission work this hard. And I hung out with quite a few. So I just, we admire it. And you were right, we are not done. And actually, when you started talking about the implementation plan, I will be clear, I got excited. We're, we're absolutely not running out of gas. We want to keep going. And so we'll be very clear about that. One little clarification, I, we know that creek trails and trails near habitat areas are ultimately sensitive of almost all the things that we've ever talked about on the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, the Parks Master Plan, this planning work. And we had real clear direction from council most recently on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. We're going to go back and triple check. I double-checked it, but we will triple or quadruple check and make sure that the policies that speak to those areas, the Vista Trail and any creek trails, they're in chapter five, Policies 542 and 43. Will, we will look at them over and based on what we've heard tonight, if we think there needs to be a revision, we'll, we'll prepare one for you. And we can present it at your next session. We welcome Commissioner Pogar to teach us more about coastal terrace prairie. We just really have learned so much about it. And there's endlessly more to learn about it. So it's, it's great to have the local expertise. We have also received local expertise through the botanist, Tony Corelli, which has been very helpful to us. And some of us, I know Brittany and I have both taken her, her class through the Coastside Land Trust, where we, we learned to begin to identify some of these very special plants. And it informs our work and it frankly makes us respect space, the land more. And so we, we like being integrated in that way, and we appreciate being welcomed into that as, as staff people. So thank you for that. We have a lot to do for your next meeting. So I think we, we would expect written comments. And we do expect to spend quite a bit of time reviewing them and preparing responses so that you are well informed and you have all the tools you need to, to keep moving on to the next step. Brittany, do you have anything for clarification? Are you, are you good?
No, no, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Just to, just to confirm, it early when we were talking about workforce housing, affordable housing, there was a question about Measure D. I wanted to make sure that didn't fall off the table.
That did not fall off the table and
It's on my list.
It's on her list. It's on my list. I, I have three different answers, so that's why I didn't answer yet. That means I, I have more to think about. So we, we will, we will give you one answer.
I don't, I don't doubt it.
Okay.
And as a procedural matter, when we get into the next meeting, do you think we're going to be in the same general, generalized kind of conversation? Or do you think we're likely to drill that into specific areas where we need to start paying attention to what gets discussed with what quorum?
I don't know. We are intending to present the Public Works chapter, which is hard to present because we've got lots of modeling. And we will try to boil it down to what really matters there. And then I thought we should open it up and maybe have some guiding topics. And frankly, if the commission wants to send email to Brittany or me on a particular theme that you would like us to develop more information about, we can do that. We very much want to know if individual commissioners want to talk about any specific properties. Because we are here for you to make sure that you aren't, aren't put in a bind about a conflict. There are ways of dealing with it. And the segmentation review process is absolutely the, the way this is done when, when it gets down to those kinds of issues. I've, I've seen it conducted beautifully. I've also gone through plans where it never needed to be engaged. So we just don't know what you're going to do. So we'll, we'll be prepared for, for whatever you need. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, colleagues, is there anything else that you would like to share with staff as follow-up to the presentation?
No, I would, I think staff have done a great job and they've captured the comments I think we've raised. From my perspective, I would, to go back to some of the earlier comments, my fellow commissioners may encourage everybody in our community, if you do nothing else, read the opening chapter of this document. You can find it online on the city's website. Highly encourage folks to get that fundamental grounding in the public policy of Half Moon Bay. And I also just want to thank our city council and our city manager, Bob, for making sure that we have the resources from city staff to manage this process. Good government isn't cheap. And, you know, I have witnessed some very talented people, including the former executive director of the California Coastal Commission, preeminent biologists, botanists, and frankly, a fantastic legal team have helped us through this process. And it's money well spent, but we haven't spent too much money on it. So thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other speakers, I would entertain a motion to continue this item to our August 11 meeting. Did I get the date right?
Yes.
Okay.
I second the motion.
I didn't
Well, I need a, I need somebody to move it first. I make a motion to continue this until the August 11th meeting date.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Hernandez-Holt. We'll call vote fine.
Commissioner Pogar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Aye.
And Chair Benjamin?
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Director's Report. So if you still have a voice.
Yes, and we can, we can click through this pretty quickly. I'm going to go through your agenda forecast, council director, and architectural advisory committee, and then reserve, we want to talk to you about meeting timing because we had something different tonight. And we just want to see what you think. And then also share some of the limits around this. So you know what you're doing next meeting is this continued, as well as PG&E is going to come back. So we have to figure out how to structure that in your meeting, and we're looking that over. August 25th is your hearing on the land use plan. We have September full with private development projects that are really sequoia oriented. We will update you more about
We will update you more about that next time. It's dependent on whether or not they are ready. City Council on August 18th will receive a presentation on the regional housing needs allocation methodology. This is associated with the Plan Bay Area 2050 blueprint that's underway right now and bringing in someone to do that presentation for us. And I'd encourage you guys to check that out. I think it's going to be interesting. September 15th, City Council Measure D transfers. And then September 29th and October 6th, you saw on a slide earlier, the two-part hearing that we are preparing for City Council following your work on the land use plan. Community Development Director items, the administrative work that we do that we want to make sure you know is going on. We had three items last week. August 12th, there are two items that are both administrative, but we put them on agendas now to make sure you see them. Three fifteen Magnolia is an accessory dwelling unit. One seventy-two Miramonte is also an accessory dwelling unit. August 26th, there is a, both of these are also administrative. There's six eleven Johnston Street. They have an addition, it's just a little bit over 10%, which means it trips the threshold for a CDP. It also has an ADU. And then five eighty Metzger has an accessory dwelling unit as well. And that's as far out as we're booked through August for director hearings. The Architectural Advisory Committee meets again on August 20th. And we plan to bring the proposal at Parisama and Mill Street that you saw in study session recently and possibly seven ninety-five Main Street. They most recently met and considered the Hyatt project. And the Architectural Advisory Committee's input on that is going to inform project alternatives for for that secret document. There was a business survey conducted that I know at least one commissioner was interested in, and I can share the results with you. This is COVID related, but it it's sort of an opportunity to see how things go. We've been trying to prepare a more over the counter process for temporary outside sidewalk uses such as retail and dining. The city really doesn't have have that structured right now. And so in in preparing that kind of quickly to to help provide more space for businesses to function while inside uses are restricted. The survey was intended to make sure that we were on the right track with what Main Street in particular was looking for. So we'd be happy to send the survey responses to you. It's a, I I don't know if it's on the website already or not, but it was interesting. And it's just getting the vibe of our downtown. And you've done a lot of work on downtown planning and zoning and we thought you'd be interested in that. Okay, meeting time. It's so lovely to see everyone at nine twenty-four PM instead of so late. So we did start early tonight. It was, we'd like to know how that worked for you. We can do that for study sessions and special meetings. Your bylaws aren't very flexible about this for hearings. So we could address that at some point in time, but we are strongly recommending that your public hearing on August 25th for the land use plan be a regular meeting with a seven o'clock start time. Give us your feedback on earlier start times. We are also are not really supposed to start earlier than six on an evening meeting. The thinking of that for your bylaws was it five o'clock or earlier is very hard for commuters to participate. And especially if you're trying to feed smaller humans or get them from school or childcare or who knows what. It's just a really challenging hour of the day. Now, now that we're all zooming, maybe five o'clock is ideal and we should all be eating. I don't know, but that's what your bylaws say. So we propose for your next meeting on August 11th to start at six and we could give the presentation for Public Works and then continue that as a special meeting into your regular meeting and start it at seven. Take care of PG&E next or not, do it at the end. It's up to you, but we need to have have that item because it's a hearing and needs to be conducted during a regular meeting. So it's a little awkward, but we'll we'll start earlier if you preferred it like like we did tonight.
Thank you, colleagues. Do you want to weigh in on her suggestion?
I prefer, I prefer, go ahead, Brian.
I was gonna say, I I appreciated the earlier start time. I have little ones that I take care of and and frankly, I can't balance my schedule from one day to the other. So so I just try to make it work. But but the earlier start time is is generally appreciated.
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez?
I'm on the same page, especially for the times that we're in right now. We want to amend our bylaws for Zoom virtual meetings so that we can have an earlier start time as a regular thing. I think all of us appreciate being able to get to bed earlier. So I'm strongly in favor of that.
This is Sarah. Sorry, I I turned off my video because it's getting very choppy with
Very good.
With that, with the video on. So I may be the lone one who, while I don't like the late meetings, of course, like, you know, I make dinner for my family and no one else has had a cook. And so like, it's kind of a free for all. Then so I I must just say that I wouldn't necessarily like going permanently to six PM. I get it if everybody else does, but I will say that oftentimes even at seven, like I'm in the kitchen just getting my, getting food on the fam, you know, the on the table for the family right up to the last second, not that I actually get to eat it. But just just putting that out there that, and then also like finishing up everything from work and then being able to get dinner on the table after finishing up everything from work between like an hour is just not a lot of time. So I'm just putting that out there. If if everybody else wants to move to six, that's fine. It's not that, you know, but it's just something for, even I realize the late meetings suck, frankly. But in terms of like sleep, but it's just where I'm at.
I'll be backing you up in a minute, Sarah. Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I'm sympathetic to the family issues. You know, I'm I'm at a stage where my kids have flown off to other areas, so I don't have to worry about that. I per, just personally, the way my brain works and the way maybe a lot of human brains work, the earlier the better for me. I feel much more, much more confident tackling the public's business at at nine rather than 10.
So I'm a night owl, so I actually get sharper as the evening wears on. But my real concern is that while many of us are zooming, we're working from home, there are quite a few people in the workforce who are commuting. And while in the mythical workday that goes nine to five, people could get back possibly in time for a six o'clock hearing. In Silicon Valley, that's not how it works, just like that's not how it works at City Hall. So I am hesitant to suggest in regular public hearing items where we're asking for important public input, that we ask citizens to make themselves available that early in the evening. I certainly would do it for you, but I'm not sure we should ask them to do it for us.
Well, I'll just say, I have to go read my kids some stories right now and put them to bed. So I'm going to drop off of this meeting and thank you all. Appreciate the good conversation and everything else, but but I'm dropping off now, so thanks all.
Thank you. So I don't know if we kind of left it, sort of left it in the air. I'm open to having a six o'clock start, regular agenda is seven o'clock meeting to hear PG&E. That sounds fine with me. But for our big hearing on the 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 second meeting in August and going forward, regular public hearings, I really feel like we should be keeping it where it is, just out of respect for the public. Sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you for the discussion and yeah, I, as somebody who has had kids in every stage and age of childcare and a traveling spouse, and yeah, sometimes people don't eat. So good, and we appreciate and respect everybody's schedule. We will see you at six then in two weeks. We'll try it one more time and then we'll see you at seven on the 25th. And we can revisit again if we want to, or we can just be seven o'clock folks and try to try to get our meetings done by 10:00. I think it has been feeling pretty good to staff. So we we appreciate that a lot if we if we can can do that. And we'll take your feedback on to help you have what you need. I know our presentations can get pretty detailed. We worry about not covering everything. We worry about informing the public. And so you're seeing that in in some of our work.
I feel really good about the level of detail. Things Einstein said, things should be as simple as possible and most simple. And I feel like your judgment has been on the mark over and over and over again. So no complaints.
Also, I I did want to say that I I do respect that there's the, a certain amount of information and workload that you, like, that we as a council have to, we need to take on. And so I I think if it needs to start, if we do need to start at six, I wasn't saying no to that. I, you were just asking for our person, like my personal opinion, here's here's where I'm at. But I, like Jimmy, I recognize, like, I feel similarly to him, but I also recognize that that if there's the need to start earlier, then then I'm not going to stand in the way of that by any means. So.
All right. Anything else? In that case, we'll move to the commission communications. Any commissioners have any communications? Okay, I had one, I'll make it really fast. I attended the city council's hearing about parking in the COVID world that we're in last Tuesday. And earlier this evening, there was a passing reference to in the minutes about access to Venice Beach that I threatened to comment on briefly. Bridget, if you can bring up those slides I sent you earlier tonight. I just wanted to, for those of you who don't spend much time there, I run into Brian, Commissioner Holt there. And I see Commissioner Hernandez cycle by sometimes. But for those of you who aren't plugged in, I wanted to explain the concern. The Venice Beach parking lot, if you can give me the first page. Yeah, so yeah, that's fine. That's good. The point here was just to communicate the state of the access. My concern was not that cars couldn't get to Venice Beach. My concern is that once the car is there, the visitor has trouble getting down onto the beach from that place. What you see is GeoGrid that's eroded. It's in front of the mouth of Pillar Cetus Creek. Sometimes the mouth of Pillar Cetus Creek and Frenchman's Creek form a bar that keeps people from getting to the beach. If you can go to the second picture. So you can see what people do is they put down four by twelves or sticks to create a bridge across. This is habitat for anadromous fish, so we shouldn't be blocking streams like this. But in the name of coastal access, we do that. And, you know, the the state beach cheerfully signs this. As a consequence, people look for another way down. They see that it's not good and they end up getting on the bluff, as you can see in this picture. I see this very frequently. So when I described the coastal access issue, I just wanted to be sure that my colleagues and staff understand what it is that I'm thinking about here. I think the 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 meeting went well and I think that staff is in the process of addressing some of the concerns about parking. It's going to be a really tough problem. If you if you didn't go to the hearing and you watch it, you'll see that our citizens are very concerned about the risks. And other citizens are equally concerned about respecting coastal access. So it's it's a very polite Donnybrook how we're going to get through this. But at least when I see references to what's going on at Venice Beach, I want to be sure that there's clarity about what the issues are. So thank you for seeing. Anybody else?
I know this isn't an agendized item, so I'm not going to comment on what Jimmy just said. The pictures of Pillar Cetus Creek though remind me that in this time right now, it's very sad that we don't have the junior lifeguard program operating in the summer. But the photo of Pillar Cetus Creek reminds me of what the kids in Half Moon Bay call the wash coming out of that water course, which is the eww, because it is really gross. And there's all kinds of disgusting stuff in there from kids' physical observation of the water. So I think as we think about longer term things, we need to address the eww. And we need to address the the beach bummer notification that we got about our local beaches. I think as we as we move on past this document, I'd be interested to understand what we as a commission can do to help our friends in San Mateo County address this issue. Because I can tell you, it's, my kid got a tummy bug, probably from the red tide, maybe from the backwash in, you know, the harbor. And one of my other commissioners may have experienced the same thing. So I just think as a planning commission, as we think about longer term issues, I'd love to figure out if this is something we can agendize and address. And I'll leave that to city staff to figure out a way to bring that into the fold.
It certainly feels like something that could come up in the context of coastal access, you know, at a high level. So
When we get to the implementation plan, but it's not an agendized item, so I will move on before our
All right.
preeminent legal team tells us to stop.
I, yeah, she didn't, I didn't see her throttle the microphone, so I think we're okay for now. Has anybody else got any communications? If not, could I please have a motion to adjourn?
My move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second roll call vote at ten thirty-eight, nine thirty-eight, my bad.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt is removed, he left the meeting. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, good night.
Good night.
Everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Take care.